And that's where it stands. There was a discussion afterwards. The chairman of the Dennis Finance Committee stated that he would be looking for an amendment that he could support like that. If not, he felt that the majority or unanimous part of the board would vote against the article in support. So, that's where it stands. Nothing formal has been done. My presence here is only to be more of a open communication as opposed to dealing with innuendo or making the board go back and watch the tapes of either the Finance Committee in Dennis or the School Committee meeting last night. I'm not here to stir the pot or get in any trouble. Respectfully, I'm here just to give you the information.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
I don't normally do this. Usually we go through the rotation, but I want to hear from Tracy first because you were there. Tracy, fill us in, like what's going on from your point of view.
Well, I was gonna do it on the selectmen items, but now that Brian brought it out, and I'm glad Brian's here because I don't want to speak out of turn as he's -- as he mentioned.
So maybe we're advancing one of the selectmen's items.
Sure. So, first of all, they had an article, an agenda item on their town meeting that said amendment to the amendment. Nobody could tell me what that was. So, you go into it, you can't prepare because you have no idea what they're gonna talk about. So, after watching the Finance Committee meeting, we -- I had an idea. So, you know, Brian mentioned basically the same thing that he mentioned here tonight about what his amendment was. And I spoke about several points from my position. Number one, the comment was made that the School Committee feels that we were behind, potentially, potentially, the lawsuit. I had to clarify that we had nothing to do with that. We did our part of the agreement. We had an agreement that was signed by the School Committee and both towns. The agreement is right here, and I read this into the record last night for them to understand. Section five, "The boards of selectmen from Dennis and Yarmouth, the school district, the school committee, and the superintendent all agree to affirmatively, expressly, and diligently advocate in good faith for the approval of said amendment of the regional agreement." So I questioned whether or not them trying to amend it was really in good faith of supporting this agreement. That was my question. The fact that we're continuing to have a discussion about possible amendment to an agreement, which is a signed agreement, is completely unfortunate at this point in time. The warrants have been printed. And to hear Jim Plath last night get up there and tell the School Committee that he was gonna vote 7-0 or push for a 7-0 vote against this, when he told me to my face he supported it, he lied. He's always been a man of his word, and he flat-out lied. And Brian, I'm sorry, but you know it. He told us he supported this. The outside facets that have anything to do with it, we did our part. You can't hold that against us. We did our part. Now we expect you to do your part, not talk about amendments and putting it off. You know, the comment was also made that we tied the agreement to the new school, and now that they should do the same thing. Okay? Well, this agreement has a lot more to do with the new school. It has to do with Dennis paying for their children, has to do with the budgetary problems that we've had for years that will continue if this agreement doesn't go forward. So, I can tell you, I probably should apologize, I was completely frustrated last night. I was taken by surprise to hear this at such a late hour, that you would consider an amendment based on a few people's opinion. We've asked for amendments before. I mean, how many amendments are you gonna make? We have amendments we want to make. You're gonna put those forward too? No, because we have a signed agreement. The agreement says that you're supposed to advocate for this agreement. That's the agreement. So, we're not doing that now. So, in my opinion, we're in violation of the memorandum of understanding by the Town of Dennis, the town, the School Department, and the superintendent as it's written. So, I have little faith right now. I can tell you that. That's my, that's my comment from last night.
You are.
Thank you. You know, Tracy, well said. First of all, Brian, none of these comments are to you personally. I watched, over this last weekend, I watched the Dennis Finance Committee meeting. And I thought that you and Ken Jenks did a good job of presenting the case for the new regional agreement, and I thank you for that. I thought it was a thoughtful and honest approach to the issues that are in front of us. And takes into account the needs of the district long-term for budget stability, as well as building a new school. And I thought that both of you covered those, those points very well. So, but I was livid when I heard the comments of Jim Plath in particular and other members of the Dennis Finance Committee. They were, first of all, they had a total lack of understanding of the, of how the five-year rolling average was going to be applied. The first thing they talked about was that there would be a recalculation of the last five years' contributions by both towns. That discussion went on for 10 minutes or so and was never really corrected. There were statements by Ken when asked, in which he said, "Here's what the agreement says," but it never went back and said, "No, you're wrong. It doesn't, you don't have to recalculate the last five years' contributions." So, I just, there was just so much lack of thoughtful preparation on the part of the Dennis Finance Committee that it was, it was obvious that their, their sole intent was to just get out of the memorandum of understanding. It's clear to me that Dennis just simply, the Dennis Finance Committee just simply wants to ignore the memorandum of understanding. And to imply that the Town of Yarmouth, this board, was supporting a lawsuit when we have expressly said we would drop our lawsuit and ask for dismissal is disingenuous and a fraud on the Town of Dennis. It's lying to the, to the, to the people in Dennis. And I don't know why, I'm struggling trying to understand why the School Committee would take that up and support that approach of changing an agreement that, that we all agreed to support, and which expressly says any modifications are to be voted on by the Select Boards and the School Committee and presented to those, not run to town meeting and try to make major modifications to an agreement that we all worked hard, worked very hard to negotiate. The last point I'll make was with regard again to Mr. Plath was during the negotiations in which, which you led, and I think were very effective in bringing closure to eight years of negotiation between the towns. During that meeting, Mr. Plath said, "The change to using the foundation formula for the excess cost over the foundation budget will cost the Town of Dennis about $600,000 a year." He said that in that meeting. And he said, "We're willing to accept that if the Town of Yarmouth is willing to dismiss the lawsuit." And we said, "Okay, we'll do that." And we then talked about the capital costs and agreed on the 35%. Mr. Plath was a major player in those negotiations. We shook hands on that. And we committed it to writing. So now he's backing out, and the Dennis Finance Committee is, is backing out also. And furthermore, the Select Board was nowhere to be seen at that Finance Committee meeting. And Elizabeth Sullivan sat there, and I would think as a representative for the Select Board, would have supported the agreement that we all signed. But she did not. So what have we got? We've got all the representatives of Dennis absent from a major vote being taken by the Dennis Finance Committee, and a, and a representative that works for the Select Board in Dennis who said nothing in support of the memorandum of understanding. I was just disgusted with, with this whole thing. I, I'm not gonna, Tracy spoke well about the, the School Committee. I'm not gonna be redundant in that. But here we are. We've got two, two other parties that signed this agreement, and they're both, in my view, just throwing it away and saying, "Oh, no. Our signatures aren't worth dittily squat." Makes no sense to me.
I don't normally allow this type of debate during public comment, but I do think it's important. Brian raised the issue. Tracy was at the meeting. Norm had some comments. I think it's good for the board too, because in a week, we're gonna have to deal with this issue. We're gonna have to have our, obviously, our legal counsel weigh in on this. I don't know how much of this he's even aware of, and I haven't spoken to him about it. I'm getting an education here tonight, listening to Brian and to our two selectmen here. But just off the cuff, here's the way I see it. I don't think this agreement can be amended on the town floor, because the agreement was entered into not by the town meeting, but by the school district, the Town of Yarmouth, and the Town of Dennis. And I would think that those three bodies would first have to agree to whatever amendment there was, and then that in turn would have to go before the respective town meetings. But my opinion would be, number one, that would be the procedure. And number two, whatever is in this agreement, and I'm not, you know, I have it here, but I, I'm not reading it with, in great detail, is that this is it. This is what's going before the two town meetings, and nothing more, nothing less. It's, it's an agreement. It's a contract. It's a binding agreement. Under five, this is the paragraph, I think, that kind of gets to the essence of what all three speakers were talking about. Says, "The boards of selectmen of Yarmouth and Dennis, and the School Committee and Superintendent, all agree to affirmatively, expressly, and diligently advocate in good faith for approval of the amendments to the regional agreement. Furthermore, the boards of selectmen for both Dennis and Yarmouth, both affirmatively, expressly, and diligently advocate in good faith for each town's respective Finance Committee's approval of said amendments to the regional agreement." Then it says, "Notwithstanding all of that, there's no guarantee what, what's gonna happen at town meeting." But, you know, again, this is really more of a legal question, and whatever our town council comes up with, I would defer with him. But my, my opinion would be that you cannot make an amendment at this, to this agreement, that this is what's, the changes that were incorporated in the settlement agreement are what goes forward to the two towns. Period. Without any changes. So we'll see. We'll see what happens. And again, I do want to talk to town council about that. We have, we have all of one week to do that, and I certainly will.
Totally understand. And, and I take all your comments and the way they're presented, and I respect everybody on this board. I just felt it was important that someone stand in front of you. And--
I appreciate it, because I'd rather hear it now than be surprised a week from today.
I have a saying. I'd rather take the javelin in the chest than in the back. So, it's all good.
So would we.
Tracy, that's why I'm here. And that's why, you know what? Nothing formally has been done. We don't even, like, Mr. Stone just stated that maybe the attorney say you can't do some, do something like this.
I would doubt that they would say you could, honestly.
I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Vita?
I'm sorry. I know you had a different line of--
Go ahead.
Because I have, I was there last night, and I have something else to add, that is emanating from Mr. Plath on the budget, the operating budget. But I just, if you tried to wrap your brain around just the mechanics of how something would have to be, you know, with this kind of thing, I just can't understand how that could happen, especially when, you know, there are two separate meetings going on. It's, it's just totally insane. And it was, somehow, Mr. Plath has done at a 180-degree turn. For years and years, he was the one who said he was against the new building to begin with, all the time. Suddenly, he's, you know, all for it, and that's gonna be the, the contingency that he will put on the, on the articles, you know, in order to proceed with this. But in any event, on the way out the door, he was telling me that they had, on the Dennis warrant, they have an article, and it happens to be the very first one, dealing with fiddling around with the operating budget assessment for Dennis, some more. And what it is, is, it's very curious. The word "assessment" isn't being used, but the numbers apply to assessments. And so they are trying to see if they could lower Dennis's assessment by another $138,000. And in other words, they give the 16491, which was the July 29th one, that where they, the School Committee lowered the total budget and then reconfigured, and the $311,000 that Dennis was gonna be responsible for in increase in their assessment, just poofed and disappeared. So now, he's got another $138,000 lowering by that amount. Honestly, I mean, it says for a reduction of $137,831. So, I'm wondering, now, we have a problem, because the operating budgets have been passed in the two towns on different bases. Ours was passed on that pre-determined percentage amount. If I remember correctly, it was like 6832 or something like that, that was, that we were voting on, that, that was how it was going to, to see if we could use the table and eventually bring it to 6535, I guess, over a five-year period or something like that. That's our basis. The basis for, for the July 29th budget is the current formula that Dennis is using. So we're not, we're not in the same place there with, you know, on, on the operating budgets. I mean, they've been done on two different bases. And is this further, you know, fiddling around? Now, I'd like to veer totally in a different direction. Shortly before, since I see the solarization is on, on the, on the agenda. Shortly before his death in 2013, the late George Alair told me, speaking about what you have on the roof here, the solar panels, that in 2008, that's when they were installed, but I guess pretty much in that year, they were, it was being proposed, and some charlatan who was doing the proposing insisted that we had to shell out $50,000 to install them, and the taxpayers did, and insisted that the panels would pay for themselves in two years' time, and everything else was gonna be gravy. And when I was speaking to George Alair, it was exactly five years after the installation, and the savings, according to him, were $15,000. So I asked Jeff, could he please look into this and bring it up to date and see if we're having gravy anymore at this point?
Okay, thank you. Joyce?
Just two energy items, but I just mentioned that you can track the solar production, of course. There are town records for that. There are funding records through the agency that paid for it. So it's very easy to check the number of kilowatt-hours and, and dollars saved or, or not. Anyway, the first item is from the compact. The compact has a Small Business Main Streets Initiative. We sort of don't have a downtown. We have three mini downtowns. So while that is going on in some places that have downtowns, they're extending the savings through October 31st to towns like Yarmouth that are not so supplied. And it's a very good deal if you're a small business. The incentives for efficiency upgrades will, until October, through October 31st, be up to 90%. You know, the small business ones are never quite as good as the residential ones. Well, this, this comes very close. So what you have to do to get those incentives is you have to be in the queue by the end of October 31st. So, you know, get through town meeting on the 29th, and then you have two days to call. And the number to call for an audit, which puts you on the list to get the up to 90% upgrades, is cape-likecompact.org is the website, and the number's 800-797-6699. If you want to go on the website, if you just look for the Main Streets Initiative, that will give you all the details so that you can see if it's something you're interested in. The second October item is an Energy Committee item. I'd like to apologize to the three Yarmouth residents who appeared for Yarmouth Energy Committee office hours at the Senior Center yesterday. The person who was scheduled to do those hours was taken ill unexpectedly. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna stay late next week and cover the hours in case there's a crowd because of people from two weeks' time coming. We're also gonna be at a table outside the meeting room at the special town meeting. So we'll be at a table in the hall there. If you have any questions about energy issues, energy audits, the Solarize Plus program that's on later in the program, and has nothing to do with municipal installations whatsoever. If you have questions about any of that, we can handle them then. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Steve?
Steve Prinsman from Yarmouthport, Massachusetts. Very non-confrontational issue, not having to do with much in the way of finance. Just bothers the heck out of--
We appreciate that.
--bothers the heck out of me that there are areas of Yarmouth that don't have solar, excuse me, don't have cellphone reception. This is 2020. You can call Europe from any place.
Not in Yarmouthport.
Now, Jeff Colby and Dan have been most helpful to getting me in touch with Forever, excuse me, Eversource, and Verizon and Sprint. My understanding is that there are cell towers on the water towers in German Hills or Prospect Hills that would solve the problem. But for some reason, they can't get together and hook up what has to be hooked up. It's ridiculous. It's shameful that in this town, we don't have cellphone reception. It's even a health concern. There are places in Kingsway where I happen to live that people don't have landmines, land, right, land phones. But if they don't have cell service and there's an emergency, they can't, it's, it's a bad situation. I don't know if that's something that you folks can handle, but somebody has to do something, and it just keeps on getting postponed and postponed. Now I understand we have to wait another four months for Verizon's design on the cell towers to be approved by Sprint. It just seems shameful is the only word I can use. But if you guys can do something, it would be great.
Can I say something about that?
Sure. Go ahead, Tracy.
Well, I think one of the things that we, we thought about, or I did, after the situation happened with the fatality with the shark, I think, in the Lower Cape, that was one of the problems that they encountered, was the fact that they didn't have cell service at the time. And I know Dan probably could shed some more light on it. We, I had made that. I do think it's a safety issue, and I think especially on the north side or anywhere you are, if you have a, you have to be able to call 911, you should be able to, to do it in this day and age. So, I know Dan was working, I think Kevin Lennon had sent a letter at some point in time. I don't know where we're at with that, but I agree. We don't seem to be making any progress on it, so.
It just gets delayed and delayed, and I don't--
No. I think it's a serious concern.
Thank you.
But it is being undertaken by the Police Department. Just so you know, there are, there have been letters on behalf of the town that have been sent.
Hopefully that gets an action.
I wouldn't count on it.
Anyone else? Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Just want to make a quick announcement that then Saturday at 10 o'clock on October 26th, there'll be another open house at the DPW at 507 Buck Island Road. One more opportunity for people to take a look at the existing facilities in advance of town meeting on Tuesday, when we'll vote on the, the new building. Again, that was Saturday, October 26th at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
10 to what, Jeff?
To noon time. 10 to noon.
All right. Let's move on to less controversial pastures. Golf, actually. We have a golf fee increase hearing. This is the first hearing of two. I'll start with the legal notice and try to describe what's going on here. The, the notice reads as follows. "A fee hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, October 22, and Tuesday, November 19th, at 6:00 PM at Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. Route 2664, for 2020 proposed annual golf fees. Written comments will be accepted at selectmen@yarmouth MA US until November 18th. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. The board meeting will begin at 6:00 PM." Then it lists a, a series of fees. Some of these have already been acted on at town meeting, but are nevertheless included in the notice. First one is an annual pass. That is such a fee that's been previously acted upon. The existing fee is 892, and by action of the last town meeting, it will be increased to $1,150. The second one, the senior annual pass, has also been acted upon previously at town meeting and will go from 535 to $725. The link annual pass is being proposed, an increase of, from 300 to 315. The under-35 annual pass has previously been approved at town meeting and will increase from 535 to $725. The young adult annual pass is being proposed to increase from $299 to $310. The junior annual pass, which is for 19 and under, it's being proposed to increase from 100 to 105. Those fees would, would be subject to being adjusted depending on various market conditions. Green fees will increase from $96 to $180. Golf car, 18 holes, pass holder would be from 14 to 1470. Golf car for nine holes, pass holder, 850 to $8.93. Golf car, 18 holes, non-pass holder, will increase from $22 to $23.10 under this proposal. Golf car, nine holes, non-pass holder, will increase from $14.50 to $15.23. These are the proposed increases for range fees. Small from 7 to 735, medium from 10 to 1050, and large from 12 to $12.60. These are proposed increases for club rental. Nine holes, $27.50 to $28.85. For 18 holes, from $44 to $46.20. For premium set, $68 to $71.40. For handicap maintenance, the proposed increase is from 50 to $52.50. And that is the notice.
Yeah, it's all to the standard 5% maximum.
Is there anything you want to say, either of you? Do you have-- Do you have any presentation you want to make?
Yeah, we have a little one. It's just one, you stated a lot of it already, just to run through it real quick of why we're proposing the increases.
Scott, before you get started, when would you like me to hand this out?
Now would be great, actually. Thinking.
Is this different information that we're getting?
So that, this is the updated third slide. Just, it included every expense possible to the restaurants and clarified a couple of numbers. Please use that instead of the third slide. So the revenues that we met last year totaled up to $3,645,329. And then as we go into what we actually spent, I broke it down on golf operations and restaurant. So we did end up not making ends meet and using $81,000 of the town funding at that point, which is why we're proposing the maximum 5% increase on memberships, daily fees, all The next, I'm sorry. The next slide here is our membership count from 2017. We had 967, 2018, 907, and 2019, we're up to 927. That's year-to-date right now. As you see, because we had some, the capital fee went up in price, the amount of money we took on that actually increased roughly $40,000 between 2018 and 2019. To continue with that, to continue to be self-sufficient, we need to continue to go up 5% every year to keep making ends meet. So here, as Mr. Stone said, the annual pass, the senior, the under 35, all were approved at town meeting. To go up to annual pass was from 892 to 1150. Senior from 535 to 725. Same thing with the under 35. We're proposing to go up 5% on the links, from 303.15, young adult, 299, 310, and junior from 100 to 105. Same thing with the daily fees. We're proposing the 5% maximum to the amount of the actual 5% if we were to adjust down to the nearest, like say if it was, we went from 23.10 to 23, that 10 cents over 25,000 or so cart rounds adds up to about $4,000 at the end of the year. So it's, we're trying to just make as much money as possible to keep us self-sufficient. Some of these fees, like the green fees, the 108, we don't actually charge that amount at the time. It's there to be available if and when we need it. And then the same thing is, the same proposed fees for range fees, club rentals, handicap, all up 5% over last year. And handicap is now changing into world handicap system, so we actually don't know the fee at this time and what they will charge us there. That's why we're proposing 5% as well on that one. And that's all we have for you at the moment for the fees.
Okay. Before I go to the board, does anybody in the public want to be heard on this, on the issue of golf fees? For or against, or just come up and express your total indifference? Probably get a lot of those. Okay, go to the board. Anyone on the board have questions?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Two questions. Is the, I had heard rumor of an assessment that was charged to members last year. Is that going away?
That was, yeah, that was the capital fee. We do not have that for next year. We included like the upcharge or whatever that we did there into the new membership fee at 1150. So it's just one fee from going to 2020 memberships at the 1150.
Okay, so, but that's, these 2020 rates you hear, those are the fees. There will be no capital improvement fee on top of these.
Nope.
The other question I had, and I threw this out last year after our fee hearing, and it was just, it was some creative thinking, you know, it may be more complicated than would do any good, but I had a thought, you know, I golf at...
Somewhere else.
I golf quite a bit, and I have never seen a community that offered, or any golf course that offered a discounted membership for someone who held a membership someplace else. And my thinking behind that was, I come across a lot of people who say, well, I'm only here for a few weeks in the summer and getting, I'm a member back home and getting a membership, you know, I only play seven or eight times. It's not worth it for me to get a membership here because it wouldn't pay for itself. And I think the idea of a membership is to, you know, get good value out of it. Otherwise, there's really no reason to get one. So the thought behind offering a discount to someone who came from someplace else that had a membership at that other place would be to get them in, get them buying something that they may would not have otherwise bought. For example, someone comes from Quincy and has a membership at the, what's the quarry course there?
Granite Links.
Granite Links, thank you. And they have a summer house on the Cape for a couple of weeks. We may only get them for two rounds, you know, at 100 bucks a whack. But if we were to offer people like that, a discounted membership with proof of membership someplace else, I think between the idea of feeling like they're getting a discount, feeling like they might be, they might play a little more if they were to have a little membership, and also the idea that I think people like to be members places, and they like to tell their friends that they're members places. And if we can make it more affordable for someone to have multiple memberships, again, those might be monies that we would not have otherwise gotten. So I'm wondering if my logic is completely messed up, or if others can see a little bit of wisdom in trying to grab those people by offering them a discount.
Yeah, it's a pretty good thought, and at this time, we can go back and scrub our numbers, see what we could possibly bring out of it. We are involved with National Golf Foundation at this time as well, and we can bring it from them to see what they think as well, to help set us up better in the future.
You know, I think that, you know, I'm not going to try to do the numbers in my head, but if you've got 20 people that took advantage of it, you know, I don't want to repeat myself for the third time, but again, that's money that you would have not have otherwise gotten, and perhaps more than you would get if those 20 people were just going to play a round or two. You know, it's easy to go to a golf course and not have to take out your wallet.
Right.
It's super convenient. And I think that sometimes if you have to go and you have to put down your credit card, or if you have to take 100 bucks out of your wallet, you know, sometimes that's the deterring factor, where if you make it easy for people, just make a tee time. Again, it's just an idea to try to grab some, grab some people that might be out there that might appreciate the discount, knowing that otherwise, they wouldn't be inclined to get a membership because they're only here for a little bit of time, and they have a membership from where it is that they're coming from. So again, it's not on here tonight. I'm just throwing it out for thought, but I've said enough.
No, it is a good thought, and we can reach out to National Golf tomorrow and try to set up a possible fee structure, what it could be for the, for a summer special type of membership like that.
Yeah, you know, and I think you would want to, you would want to focus on those people that, you know, they're here for a couple of weeks, or if they have a summer house, maybe they're here for three or four weeks. They typically only play, you know, someone who only plays five or six rounds, a full membership isn't worth it.
I know the Captain's Course does something similar, but it's in the winter. They offer a winter special membership, so it'd probably kind of similar to that type of situation.
Yeah, I mean...
Obviously, there's more people around in the summer, so we tailor it a little different, but...
Sure. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Tracy?
I see your memo here as well that says that you anticipate the combination of the 5% increase of memberships along with the daily fees projected to additional $125,000. And I, just for the public to know, the deficit or the delta that we're looking at now is But in the projections, it would be nice to see maybe for the second hearing, how many of each of these that you do to see how your calculations are? Like for instance, the daily rate, $96 going up, how many times were you able to charge that this year?
We didn't actually charge it to that height this year.
So that's kind of my point. Like some of these numbers are, numbers that are out there, I'm not sure how you're building your budget based on something that is a potential if you haven't even reached the number before. So I have a hard time trying to see really where you get to the 125 without seeing how many times each of them were utilized in 2019, so we can see how we are projecting for 2020. I'm happy to see that the restaurant facilities are profitable. I'd like it also further broken down. It would be nice to see if there's one facility, and I've been saying this for years, when we look at revenues and expenses, both in the restaurant and the golf operations between Bayberry and Bass River. So, you know, we can't really tell where, or if it's the links, you know, if it's, you know, where the deficit's really coming from. It'd be good to know that. But my only other question is, has this has all been supported by the Golf Enterprise Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Norm?
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. It's really nice to see the trends, favorable trends in revenues, and it's nice to see that with the very substantial increases that we had in fees, that we still improved our membership in total. I think that that's a very positive sign. Hopefully, we can keep that trend going for the future. I have some very specific questions regarding the presentation that, see if we can deal with those. One of the basic things, last year, there were a number of senior pass members who became eligible for a senior pass for the first time, and a number of them were disappointed to learn that there was not a payment plan for the senior pass membership that was available on a similar basis to a regular membership. And, you know, it created some delays for people in joining the membership. And I'm wondering if we can, you know, we have, there's nothing in here with regard to what other payment plans. And I think we talked about that in the past. We talked about payment plans, and I wonder if we can kind of agree, any membership over 500 bucks has a payment plan potential? Is there, you know, I'm looking for some sort of leadership on the part of the...
Golf Enterprise Committee. I think also you'll find that we're looking with some experts on assessing how that discount three-payment plan actually impacts our revenues in terms of interest and overtime, and the amount of work it takes to make those three separate payments. They can't be by credit card because of the surcharge, and so it's then got to be a check or it's got to be cash and all of that. And so we've asked within the study what that impact is, and if they feel that that is a thing that's done commonly throughout municipal golf courses, either regionally or nationally, or if that's somewhat unique. And I think there'll be something in that study to make that decision, so, and we'll have plenty of time to make that final decision then, just tonight, because again, we haven't had a chance to look at those numbers to see if it does have an impact and what that impact might be. I know it has an impact on the players. I know it has an impact on their set income and their revenue streams, but it might actually be having an impact on the courses and that we haven't looked at. So I wish if we could just hold off and take a look at that through some other experts who understand it and bring that back to you with their suggestions or recommendations.
Just to provide you an analogous situation, I've had a membership or an annual pass at a large ski area in Vermont for 15 years. And that has always been multiple payments. They recognize that in order to attract membership and retain membership, that as prices increase, it's important to try to make it easier for people to commit.
And I understand and agree. I just would, you know, on the side of caution, be wary to make a decision tonight on something that we haven't really ever taken a look at in terms of who takes, who takes advantage of it, how many of our people do, and what that does in terms of workflow and other things. And being a good businessperson, I would think that you'd want us to look at all those specifics before we came back and supported the suggestion as it sits right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would want to point out that, you know, the membership, regular membership fee, the 1150 obviously represents a significant increase over what it used to be. But I also think that the savings that we provide our regular members in terms of cart fees are really much different than what is offered elsewhere. And I know when I moved here, I was unaccustomed. I had a membership elsewhere. I was unaccustomed to cart fees, which were offered at such a substantial discount as we offer. And I just did some rough numbers. I mean, it's about an $8 savings per round.
Right.
And if an average player that has a regular membership plays 30 times, that's 240 bucks of savings. So that's a very substantial reduction, I think, in annual expense that they're able to achieve as a result of the structure that we have. So it's a total cost savings in that regard, so. I do have some questions. You know, Tracy brought up the restaurant revenues and expenses, and I appreciate the analysis, and it's good to see that this analysis shows a profit on the part of the restaurants. I'm not sure whether that profit would equate to what we might get from leases of the restaurants, and that's something that I think the administration and the management of the course need to delve into. What is our best strategy for the future? But I do have some specific questions about the restaurant expenses. Does that include all the benefits that employees receive? Have we accounted for OPEB and retirement and medical and all those sorts of benefits in those expenses?
Originally, the number that was presented to you and was changed by this handout did not include a couple of those other somewhat farther down the line expenses. So we asked Mr. Centio to go back through those numbers and really do a hard look at them, and that's what brought that number down.
Okay.
And so he's included. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the restaurant expenses, as you see, the $420,000, that includes everything on the restaurant side, or OPEB, the Medicare, heat, electricity, everything down.
Are part of liability insurance, are part of workers' comp insurance. This department's part of all of those pieces.
All right. How about credit card fees?
Yes, that was added in later on. The credit card fees, the only thing we kind of look at is the energy and how that energy is paid for, is it, you know, there's energy credits and other things that are used, but we believe that is our direct expense for energy as well.
Okay, well, good. That's good to hear. And then I guess the other question that I have is with regard to the projected 100 And then I guess the other question that I have is with regard to the projected $125,000 of additional revenue. I just tried to figure out, just on a ballpark basis, how that number was derived. Can you tell us what that 125,000 represents?
That would be the current member total we have and going up on the fee structure.
All right, so we're...
So like, I didn't factor any additional memberships, chances that are, lose members due to illnesses and other things like that every year, roughly 5% to 10%. So I did a basic number that we have currently. I think I actually went down to 900 to be on the safe side. And I factored in the increases that we project, one that, all the ones that are approved at town meeting and the 5% to get to the 125,000.
And then the... Okay, so the, there's about $50,000, you're saying, in daily green fees, cart fees, range fees, club rentals and that sort of thing. So 50,000, so that leaves about 75,000 attributable to the membership side.
Correct, yep.
Okay. I guess the num, that seems to be in the ballpark. You know, last year, the combination of the membership and the capital fee total up to Next year, it's going to be 1150 for the membership.
With no capital fee.
I just used 700 on that, 700 members, that's 70,000 bucks. So it looks like the 125 is in the ballpark. Okay, so with a, you know, modest increase in golf operations expenses, you know, I don't know, 2% or 3%, what we'd be saying is that we still, even with 125,000 in new revenue, we'd still be, we'd be, break even at best and maybe in a, you know, $50,000 loss situation.
Potentially. And, you know, we're not covering up and saying best case or worst case scenario. We're just knowing those benchmarks we think we can meet for you. And if it rains more than expected or we get a storm, that's the nature of the business.
Right.
Right? And, but on the other side, if it's a phenomenal summer and we get warmer winter, warmer weather into the fall, then we hopefully can have more rounds than we did this year and increase those fees. And if we make some adjustments in tee times, and Scott's had some wonderful ideas, and instead of changing everything all at once and upsetting the apple cart, he's progressed slowly, I think we might be able to free up some more, you know, key tee times to bring in some more greens-free revenues, but we're not even putting those into the mix right now.
Okay. Okay, well, we're not here to talk about budgeting and expenses. We're here to talk about the fee increases. So I don't have any more questions really on the revenues. I would say on the budget side, and I'll only express my personal belief, my personal belief is we need to budget for expenses and create an expense budget that gives us a $200,000 profit. So if we've got $125,000 increase in revenues with an $80,000 loss last year, we need to, in my view, cut expenses by a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that's a tough challenge, but I think that that's a budget exercise that, you know, we've got to follow through on, so.
And as you look at and suggest that cart fee, that's an excellent suggestion. We'll bring that as well forward to see if there's an opportunity, not in these fees, of course, because we've already advertised, but maybe at the annual town meeting, we could come back and visit that for further down into the fiscal year to make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to our selectmen slash town administrator, Mark Forst.
I don't have any questions.
That's good. Okay, I don't have any either. So if no one else from the public has any questions, we will continue this matter to the next hearing date, which was...
November 11th, I believe.
After that, right?
The 14th.
It's after the 14th.
What was it? Is it November 19th? It's a Thursday.
Sorry.
It's a Thursday. November 19th, 6 o'clock.
To continue.
Okay, a motion to continue. Have a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So the matter's been continued. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Next item is Veterans Beach Sticker Policy Hearing. Legal notice on that. Who's going to take that matter?
It should be Jeff Colby, Phil Gooden.
Jeff and Phil. Okay, let me do the legal notice first. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 22, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at Yarmouth Town Hall, 1148 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. Concerning proposed Resident Veterans Beach Sticker Discount of Up to 20%, written comments will be accepted by the Board of Selectmen via email at selectmen@yarmouth MA US or Town of Yarmouth, or Yarmouth Town Hall until 4:30 p.m. on Friday. October 18, 2019, verbal comments will be accepted at the public hearing starting at 6 o'clock. Persons interested in these changes are encouraged to attend. Proposed change in Town of Yarmouth Resident Beach Sticker in Regulation Section 4. HP, HP placard, DAV and XPOW plates may obtain a sticker for a $1 service fee. A beach sticker will be given on HP, DAV and XPOW plates. A beach sticker will be temporarily attached to the placard. Honorably discharged veterans will receive a discount of 20% off the annual resident beach sticker fee upon verification of honorable discharge. A DD 214 or 214 is an acceptable verification document. That's the legal notice.
Yes, thank you very much, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Phil Gooden, here, Town Clerk as well. Last time we were before you, the discussion with the board was about a free beach sticker for veterans. I think the consensus of the board at that time was that maybe some discount would be appropriate. We went back and looked at what we could offer and what might be a reasonable expectation. 20% was a number that seemed a little more palatable for veterans discount. Also, there was a comment previously about making sure they're honorably discharged veterans, and so that's written into that requirement as well. That 20% discount, according to the census that we have in town, is 1,800 or so veterans. If every single one of them took advantage of this, which we don't expect to happen, that would be about a $12,000 impact. That's something that certainly is, can be absorbed with other revenues or offset by other revenues that we have coming in to support the beaches. So with that said, that's really the proposal for the board is a discount and the way the legal ad was written so that it could be up to 20% if the board felt a lesser number was appropriate, that will fit in that as well.
All right, since it's a public hearing, is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to the board. Mark, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I just would like to thank the administration and Jeff and Phil for looking at this. There was a letter some time ago that came to the board from a local veteran who was actually asking for the full discount. And through, through sort of working on this inquiry, we came to learn that the discount specifically was set up not for all veterans, but specifically for disabled veterans. And so through that, however, there was a commitment to take a look at whether or not a discount for veterans is something that we could afford or it certainly was worth examining. So I guess the question that I'm recommending, or asking very specifically is, are you recommending specifically this 20% discount?
Yes.
Okay. And financially, again, I'm sorry I missed this, but financially, the impact you think we anticipate might be what?
Well, it's hard to anticipate how many people will take advantage of a program that doesn't exist yet, but we looked at the number of veterans we have in the community. And again, if every single one of the 1,800 veterans took advantage of that, it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000 impact. But we do not expect everyone to take advantage of this.
I understand. No, I think it's great to offer some kind of relief, and I appreciate you looking into this, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Norm?
No questions.
Tracy?
Thank you. I think that this is a great, great thing to be able to do. We've struggled with the ability to do something and make sure it's affordable at the same time, so I think it's worthy of the discount. And I think that we should keep our eye on it and, you know, perhaps we can change it in the future, but I think this is a good way to start, to see really what the impact might be. But potentially, you know, you said there's 18,000. Obviously, we probably don't sell 18,000 beach stickers as it is in totality at this point, so...
100.
18...
100 veterans?
1,200 veterans, right.
1,200, so, yeah. I was going to say, but even still, we don't sell that many beach stickers. How many beach stickers do we have altogether in the town, Phil?
A little over 8,000.
8,000. So we don't know what portion of those are veterans, but I just want to thank you for continuing to work on it and coming back with something that we can all support, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with Tracy. You know, we have struggled with how and what to do for a long time. And I agree, again, this is a good start and at the very least, a nice gesture. So thank you for putting this together.
Okay, I would like to also voice my support for this, and thank you for your work. It's something that the board has been thinking about for a long time, but we haven't been able to bring it forth in concrete terms, which you gentlemen have done, so that's much appreciated. I didn't notice in the legal ad when this second hearing was going to be...
Should be on the same date.
Yeah, I just didn't see it in the notice. So that was, what, the 19th?
Yeah.
Okay, so unless anyone else wants to be heard, we have a motion to continue this for a second hearing till November 19th.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the matter...
I'm sure we need a second hearing to reduce the fee. Usually, usually the problem comes back when we're increasing fees.
Well...
True. But...
Yeah.
This is the Bob Howard and then where we don't do singular...
It was...
Perhaps, perhaps that is not needed nor...
It was listed in the agenda though as a first hearing, that's why I think we'll...
Chairman, I thought it was a good move in keeping with the tradition of the board that we do this.
No, I think you're right, and I think we'll have a very, very quick hearing and this a second time around, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, you're not going anywhere, I think. Next one is the DPW Building Finance Update. So you're going to be accompanied by Ed, I believe, on this.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you again, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Ed Centio will be joining us. We have a couple of brief slides that you do have the backup information in your packet that's on these slides, but we just felt it was a good way to present that. One of the pieces of information you have is a very detailed debt schedule, and that just didn't make for, we just want to be able to communicate that effectively with the people that might be watching at home. And so that's one of those slides here as well that just shows that in a more simple version. But what I'd like to do is start out by giving the good news, and that is, we opened up bids on October 16th, last Wednesday, and the good news is the low bid was lower than the engineer's estimate. And that was completely unexpected in this particular construction environment. We've had a number of projects recently, and nearly all of them have been over the engineer's estimate to sub magnitude. Some of our recent projects, 15% was pretty typical. In fact, one project, we had 40% over the engineer's estimate. This particular one came in just slightly below the engineer's estimate. If you remember last time, we were here talking with you about this project, it was a range. We had a, two different independent estimates that were done. One that was done through the design engineer and one that was done through the owner's project manager. And that range was 16 and 1/2 million to roughly $18 million. And given that range and unknowns associated with the bidding climate, what was printed in the warrant as well as on the ballot was that $18 million number. But the good news for this board, town meeting and the public as a whole, is that number can be lowered significantly because of that attractive low bid that we got. What should be noted with regard to the bids, and so the first item we have with regards to the bids is on this slide here, is there is quite a range in those bids. And that's also was supported through that range of estimates we had. The low bid from GVW was a very attractive bid, as you can see from the slide. The total of that bid is $14,633,435. Ranged all the way up to something that was just shy of $18 million, so quite a range. But as I was getting ready to say, the thing that we want to be aware of is the second low bid was about $1,004 higher. So we like to see tight ranges, or tight bids, I should say, when we open bids, showing that everybody was clear on what they were bidding on and there was some consistency there. So there is a little bit of a range here that's a slight bit of concern. But with that said, we've done our due diligence. The design engineer and the owner's project manager have reached out to that low bid, and they've reviewed the numbers. They've seen all the results since last week when we opened the bids and made that public, and they are confident with their number. They're interested in doing the project and they're willing to hold their number. So we have every reason to believe that low bid is a good, solid bid for the project, so it is good news. I mention all of that because the discussion for tonight related to the financing is how does the board want to present that as far as a package for town meeting? Do you simply want to have, there's a number of options available to you. You simply could put that low bid on the Article Number 2, the town meeting warrant for the, for that low bid amount. Again, we'd have to add in some soft costs associated with that. So that total number related to the low bid would be $16,485,435. You could simply put that on, which is one option. Our design engineer is concerned with regards to the difference between the low bid and the second low bid. And so you'll see on that, one of the pieces of paper, the backup within your packet, it's a chart that has two yellow bars on it. That one has a design contingency associated with that. So what they're suggesting is that that might be prudent to be thinking about if there is an issue with regard to the low bid. We don't have a signed contract, and we won't have a signed contract with the low bidder until after we get all of our approvals through town meeting and the ballot. And so that, something could potentially happen through that period. So it's worth noting, the recommendation that we have relative to the project, that I have relative to the project, is to put that $16,485 number on what gets moved at the article, town meeting. But the question that really is, how do you want to pay for that? Do you want to borrow all of that? We do also have capital stabilization and free cash available to us, and that's the piece that Ed Centio probably could speak to best, as well as the debt schedule that he's worked with our bond counsel on generating. You do have in your packet that detailed debt schedule associated with if the entire amount was borrowed, so you get an idea of what that looks like. Again, you have options available to you to reduce that borrowing impact using some of the other sources. And a third item would be, Chapter 90 funds are potentially available for this project as well. Knowing that there was some hesitancy related to using Chapter 90, I created this, with Ed Centio, created this financing options worksheet on this slide here. And I have copies for you tonight if you'd like to have something to take notes on or write on relative to the balances. What this slide shows is that we have a current balance in capital stabilization of $1,279,125. We have a current balance with free cash of $3,419,403, although we have some commitments against that, and that's in that notes column on the right. We have some tornado expenses, which are one of the articles at the special town meeting. There's OPEB, potential snow and ice and potential C and D supplement. Those are pretty typical items we've seen in the last couple of years. That's generally been used as free cash requests, potential stabilization contributions and maybe some other commitments. So... contributions, and maybe some other commitments. So, backing those items out, that gives us a balance of $1,984,894 that could potentially be available in free cash. And I also included underneath the total amount to be considered of the $16,485, the Chapter 90. What I'd suggest is that might be prudent as a backstop, something we wouldn't necessarily put to offset the cost of the low bid, but something that could be used if we needed, for some reason, to go with the second low bid, if the first, if the low bidder withdrew for some reason. Again, that's not expected, but if that happened, that Chapter 90 could potentially be the backstop that would get us to that second low bid. Again, hopefully it wouldn't be used, but might be a possibility. So, those are the range of possibilities associated with how this project could be funded. Again, it could be entirely borrowed, or a portion of it could be borrowed and offset by those particular financing options there. It's really up to the board and how you'd like to proceed with that. Happy to answer any questions. I think Ed's here as well to maybe explain some of the other numbers, debt schedules, any questions you might have in that regard.
Norm? Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, it's always nice to have good news. So, you know, I, I think the numbers, whichever bid you select, or we end up selecting, provide us with substantial savings, so, over the life of a 30-year note, so...
Absolutely.
One of the things I noticed, and it hadn't occurred previously to me at least, was that we have furnishings, and we've got communication systems, and we have industrial equipment, and I'm not sure exactly what that is, so I'd kind of like an explanation of what those are, but if, if, if those are just, you know, regular furniture and fixtures, equipment, operating equipment, usually those items do not have a life of 30 years. Usually, furniture and fixtures, you think of as a 10- to 15-year life, at least from an accounting perspective. Lots of times, those things may last longer in actual use, but nonetheless, a 30-year life assigned to those and, and built into our financing schedule means that those items, which now total about $500,000, would cost us probably double that with interest over 30 years. And to me, those items, I think, would be better choosing, you know, free cash or stabilization as a funding mechanism rather than, than going with, you know, bonding mechanism on them. Try, try to get those things wrapped up so we don't prolong the misery, certainly.
Certainly.
And I don't know if you have anything that you can add with regard to what those items are in, in the schedule here?
Yeah, certainly. The, the way that schedule is broken up is the first section in that spreadsheet was the construction costs, and, and that relates to the bids that were received, obviously. That's the, the bids to do the building, the site work, that type of thing. There's a number of things that were recommended to be kept out of that bid, so we don't have markup associated with the contractor, the construction associated with that, and those are referred to generally as the soft costs. Some of them obviously wouldn't be appropriate within the construction cost because there are clerk of the works or project manager costs or review costs associated with the design engineer to review submittals, things like those. Those would certainly be separate. But the furnishings are pulled out separately on these types of buildings, and when this was recommended for us, because we have county and state bids in which to get some very attractive prices on furnishings, and so rather than having that as part of the bid, and again, associated markup with that, we can get a good state or contract or, or county bid price associated with that. So, that's pulled out separately. Those costs that are below that line and are considered the soft costs are things that the town would execute separately, so we would get better prices by doing so.
So, communications and low voltage system, what is that? Is that telephone, or is it...
That would be everything from the telephone, the radios. That would also be any kind of card reader at the doors, the locking mechanism, all of those types of things would be part of that. We can procure that separately and do it separately. The contractor would provide the conduits within the building to do so, but it would be cheaper for us to work with our IT department and do that separately.
Okay. Yeah, I was interested in those, what those are, and then the industrial equipment, the $276,000, what does that, what, what kinds of things are included in that?
That is a bid alternate, so that is something we would do with the contractor if accepted, and that includes things like the overhead hoists, the vehicle lifts, things of that nature, industrial equipment.
Okay, all right.
And it was, it was pulled out...
I mean, the contractor doesn't care how we fund it.
That's correct.
If we decided to fund those particular items, the hoist and those kinds of things, with, with cash upfront rather than spreading it out over 30 years, and that would be our choice.
Right, as long as we pay the bill, he's happy, right?
Yeah, okay. All right. I did have another question that had occurred to me. I guess the, oh, I, yeah, a real basic question, and, and this is probably to be answered by Ed at this point. We're using a 5% interest rate, and, you know, I regularly receive information from a large brokerage company that, on Massachusetts bonds that are being issued, and day in, day out, they're being issued at 2% to 2.5%. Now, those bonds sell with a 5% stated premium rate, or, or interest rate, but they sell at a very high premium, so the effective interest rate is 2% to 2.5%. Now, I'm wondering how this works. I mean, are we gonna get hit with the 5% rate that they're selling them at, or are we gonna get the rate with the premium considered?
We get hit with the 5% rate, but we get the premium back upfront, so what we would do is use that premium to reduce the actual project costs, so that ends up, you know, the time value of money is...
Effectively with the same, same result.
Yeah, time value of money, we're getting that money sooner.
So, pardon me for being suspicious, but I kind of wondered if the state took the premium and, and we got the 5%.
No, no.
Okay.
The premium, the premium comes to us, and the 5%, you know, you look at today's interest rates, our financial advisor with Unibank is being very conservative, not knowing after the, after the complete construction is being, is done, what those interest rates may be, because we're not gonna borrow at that rate immediately. What we're gonna do is we're gonna do short-term borrowing, get the building constructed. Once it's constructed, then we'll do the long-term borrowing.
Well, but given, given the current rate environment, it would be in our interest, certainly. You know, I, while I wouldn't, I would not be fearful of a substantial reduction in rates from the current environment.
Right.
I don't think we'd get burned in that regard.
This is a great interest rate.
But, you know, so, we'd, we'd wanna be, you know, aggressive in getting our financing fixed and in place as quickly as possible so that we escape the, the risk associated with...
The only, the only problem is we have to have a building.
Understand. Understand, yeah, so, but, you know, I guess the point I'm making as well is that, you know, we've got a $15 million price tag associated with interest. If it in fact comes in at 2.5%, that's a heck of a big discount.
That would be great for us, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy?
Ed, while you're there, before you go, can you tell me a little bit about, I'm sorry, the capital stabilization? This says, I can't even read that, sorry, but it's one point...
$1,279,125.
And that's the total, that's the total amount in the, in that account, or that's, so that's the total capital stabilization?
Total.
That's the total capital stabilization that we put aside for, you know, possibilities like this.
Okay. Possibilities like this, but was there a plan of using that for anything else at this time?
No, we just, as we were able to put money towards capital stabilization, we knew we had a DPW building coming up, a school coming up.
Yeah.
So, we wanted to put some money aside so that when you thought it was appropriate, we would use that money.
So, the capital stabilization, though, so, okay. I guess I'm, I'm a little bit skeptical about utilizing. I, I agree with Norm's point on these items that are, have a seven-year depreciation.
Tracy?
I don't think that we, you know, if we can find a way to fund them outside of, of a 30-year note, I think that that's really important, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're... Oh, thank you. Smart about making sure that we keep money in there in case there's other items that come in an emergency or other things that we have, so...
And that's, and the, and the emergency fund is usually our general stabilization, but, you know, again, having different sources of money is, I think, very important to us, but you could choose, and we could look to replenish, you know, their stabilization counts over time, but this is why we put this money aside for a capital project.
So, if we back out the, basically those shorter items, the services, I think the construction contingency would be actually something that would be within construction, so the 750. So, we're looking like maybe at a million, somewhere about a million to, to try to reduce if, if we're looking at things that are short-term, fixtures, furnitures, communications, stuff like that, that's not part of the building. So, we could do that between free cash and leaving some in the, not depleting the stabilization. I personally, I know I've expressed my opinion before, I'm not in favor of utilizing Chapter 90. I know that it is the ability to use it for these types of projects, but seeing as we've had an override for the roads before, I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul, and then a year from now, we need an override to be able to keep our roads in good shape, so I think that that's not a good option. But I'd be in favor of utilizing the available, some of the available free cash, and I think maybe we could do it without, I mean, if, if this is what current balance is, is 3.4, and we already have commitments, so we have over a million in the, in the free cash that is free to be able to use?
Almost two, yeah.
All right. I'd be more in favor of, of that at this point in time.
Just to note, and I probably wasn't clear on this slide, the commitments do not include putting any money towards capital stabilization. I just put that as a label. It, it does put, it does commit or have actual numbers for the tornado, OPEB.
Good.
Some estimates for snow and ice, some estimates for C and D.
But if we don't, if we don't have to use this capital stabilization and we use the free cash, then we're basically doing the same thing, then earmarking some of the free cash as stabilization, so it's just kind of a shell game.
And just, you know, one consideration, 2/3 vote out of stabilization and a majority vote out of, out of free cash.
Perfect. Okay, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you. As others have said, good news to see the bids come in lower. Question of the legitimacy of the low bidder. Do we, do we have any reason to believe that there would be a reason that would need to be tossed out, or are we expecting that this is a, a good bid and that it will be held until we are able to commit?
We have every reason to believe it's a good bid, and it will be held till we're able to commit, which would be shortly after the approvals at both town meeting and the ballot. The references have been checked. We had to go through that approval process for the filed sub-bids as well as this particular GC. It's a reputable company, does a lot of building projects. They're out of Boston.
And at the, at the committee level, we, there had been some discussion about the numbers being secure for 30 days. Will we meet that time limit, or has the bidder committed to an extension of that time, or has there been no talk of how long the bid is good for?
It's good for 30 days, and we're within that timeframe. We will be, yes.
Okay. You know, other than, you know, I, I would not necessarily be in favor of, you know, borrowing against our, our stabilization. You know, I, I might be able to agree to, you know, finding a way other than, than as part of the financing for the FFNE, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, because I, I kind of see those things as disposable with potentially short lifespans. The other things, you know, I, I consider more long-term, and, you know, whereas the, I think that the optics to town meeting, where there's an $18 million number printed in the warrant, and we're gonna go before them with 16,485, I think that's good. I, I think that voters will look upon that favorably, and I could not in good conscience, you know, rob some of these other sources. Certainly, I agree with Tracy on the Chapter 90 money. You know, when we, when we sold that technical override to people, well, you know, it's been presented to us that technically it can be used for this. You know, we, we kind of swore to the, to the voters that this would forever be used for roads so that it wouldn't be necessary again. So, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of that. You know, I, I could, I could see my way to finding, I think the FFNE number's probably low. I could certainly find a way to find money in free cash perhaps for that number, but, you know, other than that, you know, we work hard to create these stabilization funds, and I consider stabilization funds for an emergency. You know, this certainly isn't an emergency. You know, it would be nice not to have to borrow that money, but, you know, I think we should try. And if town meeting balks at half a million dollars in FFNE and other equipment, then we can certainly adjust the number from town meeting floor, but honestly, I don't, I don't feel like that's going to happen, whereas we've got a good building and we are a good number below the budget, so I would suggest just staying the course with the exception of the FFNE number. Thank you.
Mark?
No, I agree with everything that's been said. I think the stabilization number, I'd like to see that number actually get bigger, particularly as we do rating calls and look at some of the other financing that we have to do. That's in, that's probably at, at a low point. I mean, it's great that we've gotten that stabilization fund to the number that it is, but I, I think that I would recommend in terms of our long-term financial planning, finding a way to boost that number a little bit. So, I'm with Eric and I'm with Tracy. I think we avoid touching that completely, and I think there's suggestions in terms of how to cover it, and I think all makes sense. So, I, I think we're pretty much as a board in consensus in terms of how to go forward with this. So, those are my thoughts. I'm just curious, why in the estimate, where in the estimate were we off? Or where was the engineer off?
I'm not sure we're gonna know that for sure. It's a lump-sum bid that submitted, so there's not a detailed breakdown of, you know, here's the engineer's estimate for this particular line item, and let's, you know, let's say the metal building, for instance, and then compare it with what the actual bid was. It's a lump-sum bid, there's no detailed breakdown of what that is. So, you know, it's, it's unclear. I mean, we do know the only hint that we have is that this is a, Chapter 149 project, is a vertical building project, and with that, there are filed sub-bids, and so we know what the engineer's estimates were on the filed sub-bids, and we know the filed sub-bids came in roughly where the engineer's estimates were. The disconnect was the general contractor bid, which we don't have the detail breakdown for, unfortunately.
So, you're confident in this number, you're, the engineer is, as well, right?
Yes, they've had good discussions with that low bidder and are comfortable that he's, he's comfortable with that number.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Norm has another question.
Yeah, when I made my comments earlier about, you know, possibly using either capital stabilization or free cash, I purposely neglected or left out Chapter 90, and I do agree with Tracy and Eric with regard to that. I don't think we should be using those funds for this purpose, even though we might be able to do so, I don't think we should at this point. I think we ought to spend the money for the purposes that we've been spending it for over the last few years.
Certainly.
And I, you know, I, I think the capital stabilization fund, I think Eric makes a good point, and further on that, I, I think we created that fund through discussion with the capital committee, and we had things that we did not spend money on that were part of our capital plan, and we in fact designated some of those savings to be put into capital stabilization. So, I think that it would be important to have the capital committee make recommendations first with regard to utilization of the capital stabilization fund, and, you know, I think it's important for their participation to occur on, on votes of that sort and, and come to the board with their recommendations. So, so I would tend to focus on utilizing free cash to... So I would tend to focus on utilizing free cash to pay for the furniture fixtures and equipment and the industrial equipment that are, you know, shorter lifespans than the building itself.
I just have one more thing.
Sure.
Mike, I just want to make sure that regardless of what we do, we stick with the thought that we had the last time we had this discussion, is to make sure that we have a handout for everybody, to explicitly tell them the cost of the building, the financing, the cost per thousand, what it actually is going to cost to them, and if we utilize stabilization to reduce the number, I mean, free cash to reduce the number. I think we should make sure that it's all written in a handout and what it actually breaks down to them additionally, because we have the higher number, and I think it will probably help in terms of making people feel a little bit more comfortable that, when they can see it.
Good idea. Ed, I had a question on the bond bonding, if you could come up for a minute. Norm raised a good question about the rate at which these bonds are being sold at 5%, but sold as a premium, so what generally, and I know, you know, you'd have to see the particular issue, but what generally is the premium going for these days on Massachusetts bonds?
It varies. We can even make a request that premium is included in the bond issue, but normally what we find is that there's a small amount of premium, the premiums aren't huge, the interest rates are close to the market interest rates for what we do for municipal borrowing in our last, in our last couple of borrowings, we haven't done borrowing lately.
Would it be typically less than a point?
Yeah, but you can say, hey, I really would like a premium, and that, you know, might sway it, but what they try to do is they try to, the premium actually reduces the effective interest rate, essentially. So, what they're trying to do is they're getting to a market interest rate based on the current situation.
Increases the yield too, to the investor, because they're paying that premium.
No, no, what decreases the yield by actually giving you.
No, what I said I meant decreases, yeah.
Yeah, it decreases the yield to the investor, so.
He's paying more than face.
The last major borrowing was refunding. We had, we received some premium, and then also the septicage facility, we received some premium, but the interest rates were fairly close to the market rate.
And if I understand you correctly, whatever premiums are returned would be put forward to pay down principal, me anticipating principal payments.
Not the principal, but would be used towards project costs. The Municipal Modernization Act was passed and they were more specific about what you can do with premiums, and it's really to help reduce the project cost, yes.
And it has to be put towards project costs.
Yeah, and I think there are some other options, but I think what we would try to do is put it towards the project costs and just reduce the overall, you know, up to, you know, other people making or weighing in on that, but I think that's the most prudent thing to do with the funds.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, so the current balance is 3,419,403. Less the available, less balances already committed is 1,984, so that leaves a difference of $1,434,509 that we could reduce. The 16,486,721, which would leave us borrowing a total of $15,052,212, is that correct?
That's correct, you know, now, as you know.
And the tornado expenses, even though we have it here, we're going to be paid through free cash, currently will be reimbursed through the state, which will go back into free cash anyway.
And that payment date is well off in the future.
It'll go into revenues, and then when we do the free cash calculation, the net will accrue to us, yes.
Okay, you were going to say something else, I'm sorry.
Just one caution, as you know, we also have free cash articles for the Maytown meeting, so you, if you still want to have some types of free cash articles for the Maytown meeting, you may want to reduce that number.
Well, I think that's an important thing to talk about, because there are items in that, in that number that typically we've done on a, we don't like to do on a recurring basis, but for instance, there's a piece of your budget that you took out of free cash last year, I'm wondering if those items will be, I think that, you know, tree maintenance, and I'm trying to think about things that continue to reoccur, and as much as we try to get it into their regular budget, what are we not going to be able, if we utilize this full amount this time, what will we not be able to do?
Well, that's, that's part of the overall budget process, so I think Rich has done a calculation as part of the town administration doing this year's budget to see, you know, what we can, what we can get from whatever percentage we might increase the tax rate, and then how much we might have as commitments to the schools and, you know, the two different schools, we're looking at population numbers, a increase in enrollment numbers as it relates to Cape Tech and DUI, so there are a lot of factors that we have to weigh in terms of what we can afford within the budget.
Those aren't going to come out of our free cash numbers, though.
Excuse me?
Those, those numbers aren't going to come out of our free cash numbers.
But if you, I think, from what I'm hearing is that you might want to have something like the tree work go into the normal budget.
Yep.
So if there's not enough money in the normal budget because of some of these other budget priorities, you may not be able to fit those in, so you may be, you may want to be conservative and not use all of the free cash.
Right.
So Tracy, to answer your question, I think you touched upon them, but vehicle maintenance and tree work were the big ones that were free cash requests over the last couple of years for us.
So maybe we don't want to use the whole 1.4 million.
Dan, what's the outcome of this agenda item that you're looking for? Are you looking for some kind of a recommendation that will?
Yeah, so I think one would be, what's the number to go to town meeting and the floor with to make the amendment? I think we've probably gotten to that point. The second thing too, and I wanted to run this by Ed, because of the process of how long it takes before you would finance this long-term note, we could actually hold off, I think, on some of, paying down some of these, what I'd call like lesser term life things like the FFNE and the other items to springtime, say at Springtown Town Meeting, because the project through the wintertime, they'll do site demolition, site prep, maybe they get, I don't think they'll even get the footings in the ground, it'd be close. But they got a lot of demolition they've got to do, so, you know, we're a ways away before having to make a decision on purchasing things that would go on the interior of the building. I would caution tapping the free cash number, we're just starting the budget process, we're not really, we're many weeks away from understanding how much levy capacity would be available to us, we're just doing the projections now, and what the free cash asks will go out to the department shortly. But certainly, I would be comfortable tonight saying we could probably commit without too much trouble, $500,000 of free cash towards that, we'd be, we'd be fine, but we don't necessarily have to make a decision at town meeting as to how much expendable money you'd want to use.
What has to happen at town meeting is we have to cover the entire amount of the contract with this particular vendor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to propose a motion that we recommend a number of $14,235,435, which is the six, I'm sorry, $16,235,435, which is the original total project cost of 16,485,435 minus $250,000 for FFNE and communications and low voltage. So my motion is to recommend to town meeting a number of 16,235,435, which is, which is the full amount minus 250 for community, for low voltage and furniture.
You're anticipating that the 250 is going to come out of free cash?
Yeah, well, you know.
We don't have to specify that, but that's what the intent is, long-term.
For Dan's suggestion, let's, let's see where we land in the, in the spring, and we certainly have the money to pay for those things, and we can kind of budget around it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on that, I think there's additional equipment in there, the $276,000 at the bottom of the schedule.
I did see that, the industrial equipment, but, you know, my feeling is when, you know, we're talking about, we're not talking about telephones and chairs and desks, we're talking about lifts and things that are more of a long-term nature, while they may not have a 30-year lifespan, they certainly have more than a seven-to-10-year lifespan, I would expect.
Absolutely.
So I, I'm considering the other things a little bit more disposable than the industrial equipment line item, and that's why I didn't include that.
To me, that, you know, again, I go by what depreciable lives are.
I'm sorry?
I go by what depreciable lives are, and hoists and things of that nature, lifts, you know, are typically lower on the scale in terms of lives, and, you know, I just think that spreading out over 30 years doubles our cost, and $276,000 is not an awful lot of money to take out of, in order to save another $250,000.
So, I mean, my rationale was that, you know, again, I don't want to, to Mark's point, you know, we should be trying to grow stabilization. I think we have a good number, I think it's pleasing to the voters at town meeting when they look at it compared to the 18 million that's printed in the warrant. I think that we have made a gesture with the $250,000, so I feel good about where we're at, and to, to not have to come up with another $276,000, was that the number in the spring, when we might be looking to have a little bit more flexibility with free cash? If we may do that, and we may regret not having that money in six months.
Tracy.
I think if we can reduce the amount borrowed, we're saving a lot. I, I mean, I understand what Eric's trying to do, but I think if, if staff is comfortable with reducing free cash to the amount of $500,000, I think we should do everything we can. I think it's really hard to put the burden on the taxpayers when we have money sitting in the bank that we don't have an earmark for, so, you know, this isn't the only project we have, we have a lot of projects coming up, we're, we'd be able to do this without touching our stabilization, so we can use that for a future project, which would be a good thing, and we'd still have money in free cash, but I'd be more in favor of reducing this number by the $500,000, because I think anything we can do to lessen the tax impact so we can get our other projects over the finish line is going to be really important.
But that's exactly my point, we have a lot of projects coming up, and we don't know where we stand right now, so to take, I'm sorry, but I think that to take more than we have to, where we have decisions that will need to be made in six months, and that money may be better served elsewhere, I just think it makes more sense to leave it in there for now.
Well, if we, we're in line with Eric's proposal, nothing would preclude us in the spring from dedicating another 250 to that, would it?
No.
No, I mean, again, this is a maximum, we don't have to spend it all.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, you know, like, so tonight, to your point, yes, we could reconsider an additional sum in the spring, but I would, I was told to me recently by Bob Sambor that our number for Cape Tech, the assessment's going to go up pretty significantly because the number of Yarmouth students has increased. I don't know what that number is yet, but we've been used to a very generous, comfortable margin lately, but that's reversing now. The second thing is not knowing what town meeting's going to do about the school agreement, that's still out in the background, if we end up being on the wrong side of that situation, we're going to need all available funds, because the numbers will indicate that we'll be in a big delta situation again, like we have been.
But none of those solutions come from any of these sources.
Pardon?
Those solutions don't come from these sources.
All understood, but we, but any available cash on hand at the time would help plug some gaps on something that's, could be real problematic for us.
We may have to reduce budgets in other areas and do some gap funding with free cash.
Just to carry the distance over for another year. So we can revisit this entire conversation again this spring.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, I think, right?
Yeah, my whole point is on the principle of funding short-term assets with long-term money, and I think it's a financial mistake.
You're going to be paying interest on it for 30 years.
Right. Okay, but, but I, I could be wrong, but I don't think Eric is ruling out the possibility of supplementing that figure in the spring, I think what he's saying is we've got to look at all our other projects and costs and available funds, and not having all that information now, I think he's kind of saying, maybe you go, maybe you go half the distance and then take a look at it in the spring.
It's halfway, you know, let's, I feel comfortable committing to go half the distance now and revisiting the subject in the spring.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and we're prepared to vote. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, and opposed.
Oppose.
Okay, passes by a vote of three to two.
That's not on the project, that's on the funding, just for the record.
That's on the funding, that's correct.
I don't want to have any vote in, as the project, because I'm very much in fear of the project.
That was strictly related to the figure, the figure that's going to go on the warrant.
The warrant's printed.
What's going to be amended?
What's amended from town meeting floor, yeah.
It's going to be amended, because the bids came in lower, and then it's going to be further reduced by 250,000.
So the slide for town meeting will back those two line items out of this, I'm assuming, is this going to be the slide or something similar to it, Jeff? Are you just going to put a number up there?
The detail associated with the soft costs is something we'll need to work through, there's a lot more detail on this slide than we, I was anticipating putting before town meeting, we've got to have a brief presentation about the project anyway, but certainly the total number's important that you voted tonight.
So that, the 16,235?
Right. If we do break out the detail, we'll make sure that the FFNE and communications are not included in that number. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next item, solarized program. Joyce.
And Steve and Mike also.
Steve, you, you involved in that too?
Yes.
Steve's hiding.
Thank you. For those of you in the audience who may be interested, their handouts, the what is solarized plus is what you would want, the one-pager, if you just wanted to know what we are talking about tonight. If you were potentially interested in, in the future in looking at solar photovoltaics or an electric heat pump, then the longer handout is for you. Thanks. Well, this is just a request for your support for what essentially is a community volunteer effort. We thank Rich Bianveneau for bringing this to our attention. The person who asked about or mentioned municipal solar has gone home, but this is more like that person suggested at a previous town meeting in the spring of 2018, which is, why don't we do things for people who want to put solar on their own homes and their own businesses? So, here we are. This is a state clean energy center program that's meant to reduce costs for people who would be interested in living more sustainably and producing some of their own electricity or all of their own electricity, but for whom cost has been a barrier. The solarized program has been run for 10 years successfully, it's achieved some pretty big savings for residents, and it's also achieved some reductions in carbon emissions to follow. There's now a new option, which is the solarized plus option, and the reason that we chose to go with that is that the solarized plus option would allow us to include air source heat pumps. Those are very much a coming thing as a way to supplement heating, or in the case of really small homes, to heat and cool with the electric source heat pump. They're very energy efficient, you don't have to install ductwork, and they're wonderful because they can, they can both heat and cool, and I confess that every time I drive by that trailer park on Willow Street, I keep thinking of those metal trailers and how hot or how cold, given that metal conducts, those, those homes must be, and this could even work on trailer homes. So, although I personally don't have a heat pump, my So although I personally don't have a heat pump, Mike Duffy, who's one solar co-chair, does. And he'll be, he's, as an engineer, he'll be our, our smart tech guy on this. And Steve Kritzman, who you've heard from many times about solar for the golf course, will be our, our business point man on that. We're going to go for the Solarize Plus, because we think that there may be some people in Yarmouth who will not quite be ready to put photovoltaics up. Maybe that will still be a little bit too big of a financial jump, but who might be immediately interested in the opportunity for reduced installation costs for a heat pump. And those, of course, are accompanied by some state incentives, so that if you go through Mass Save through the Cape Lake Compact and have a home audit, you immediately get $1,000 off the upfront cost of that. So we think this will help. We have a number of people who are heating with propane and with oil, and then also with that very expensive sort of 1960s form of heating, electric resistance heating, which is very inefficient and really costly for people who have it. So they would be our target people who would be most helped by this. Okay, if you have any questions about whether heat pumps work, I refer you to Mike on that. Personal experience is always best.
Questions?
I'm sorry, I don't feel good, but I really don't understand what we're trying to do. I'm sorry, Joyce. What is it that you're asking us?
This, this is a volunteer effort that, that would apply for a state marketing grant that would enable us to do flyers and things like that. We're not talking the big time here. To try to reach out to Yarmouth residents and Yarmouth small businesses for two kinds of technology, solar voltaics to produce electricity and/or air-source heat pumps that could give them more efficient heating and cooling.
But what is the town's commitment to that? What are the strings that are attached with that?
There isn't.
Cheerleading? And approval. Okay, yes. I was reluctant to put it in those terms, you know, so, you know, separation of church and state, but exactly.
Well, I'm not sure it is so easy. I'm going to relate a personal experience. And that's with a third-party solar, solar program on your roof, because I have one that's five years old.
You do?
Owned by SolarCity originally, now by Tesla. So a month ago, I received a phone call from Tesla. We noticed an error message on your system. We need to follow up on that. And I said, sure, come on out. So they came out, turned off the system, and said, we'll get back to you.
Oh, dear.
So I called them about a week ago, and I said, hi, folks, I'm just following up on the visit you made. And they said, well, Mr. Holcomb, you know, we understand, you know, there is a problem. We're going to have to send some technicians out to fix it. I said, okay, so when will that be? Well, we're scheduling appointments for a year from now. A year from now, and they will not definitively say when that would be.
That's disgrace.
So if anybody's considering Tesla, I'd encourage you to look elsewhere, because they said, we have one maintenance crew for the entire state of Massachusetts, and we're not planning on any others.
Well.
So, so, you know, you have to be very careful in your selection of vendors with regard to third-party lease systems, and, you know, that's.
And this, this, we, we would recommend ownership rather than third-party lease systems, but I realize, you know, there, there are price differentials there. One of the good things about this, at least I feel as a consumer, is that there would be vendor interviews, you know, with local vendors, and then the state helps with the selection process. And you will love this part. There's a firm deadline, like, the, the vendor who's chosen has to agree to install everything and get everything up to where it needs to be by the end of this Solarize project year. And so an individual person, even if the person is an owner of panels, sometimes is, is fighting uphill, as, as solar companies would rather run around and be setting up more solar panels, rather than fixing the ones that are already installed. But this will guarantee that we've got reliable vendors. They'll have to install them by a certain date, and they're going to be local southeastern mass vendors, so we, we know where they live.
So if you install it yourself and own it, if, like in my case, it goes down, you've got to, you've got to arrange for somebody to come out and fix that, an electrician or whoever services these things.
Well, there, there are twenty-year warranties on panels, so that, that shouldn't be very hard. You know, you just have all the, the information for the manufacturer, and they should, they should, presumably, they'll send an agent through a local company, but.
Yeah. I guess, you know, like, like with SolarCity, you know, if they had been the ones that installed it and sold it to me, that contract would now be with Tesla, that twenty-year warranty. So I'd be in the same fix of waiting a year or more for, for somebody to come out and fix it. So, you know, I guess, you know, I don't know what the solution is. And I'm not condemning solar programs, but, you know, even, even with the best of selection methods, these things get sold off to the next highest bidder, because there's a lot of money in solar. And it's, it's just, just like mortgage brokerage. There's a lot of money in mortgages, and they get sold off to, to the highest bidder in packages. So I'd be very careful with this kind of a program.
Okay. Well, I promise that we'll work hard and give it due diligence. We already have people willing to interview vendors, and then the state makes the final selection, and they, they are pretty thorough about this. I'm aware, I guess, that local vendors could be bought out by a national vendor.
Well, SolarCity was a national vendor and did installations throughout the Northeast.
Yeah.
And then they were bought out in a billion, multi-billion dollar transaction with Tes, Tesla. And now, everything you read on the internet regarding Tesla is that they're in serious financial difficulty, not only because of their car production, but also because of the hanging liabilities under the SolarCity acquisition, so.
Well, I hope for your trouble, they give you a Tesla vehicle. I think you could call it even then, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll be very careful looking at vendors, and I think that, that case study that you just gave, painful as it is, argues for patronizing small businesses for things that get installed on your house. Okay, okay. My, the co-coaches are in agreement. No, they're, they're going to take that, that Tesla consumer warning very seriously.
Okay, so what do you wish us to do?
Approve on what's going forward with the Solarize.
Approve, you're going forward?
Yes.
We have, you had a motion, Eric, who was second?
I did, I seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I would abstain.
And one abstention. The Tesla.
Tesla guy.
Tesla guy abstained, so four.
We'll try to tempt him with a really good offer if we get this grant. We hear in January, so we'll come back and tell you that, the news, one way or the other, they're only giving three grants this year, so it's, it's a tough competition. And if they give us the grant, then we'll be up and running. For anybody who's listening and might be interested, we're going to have a sign-up list for people who want to get updates on what we hear from the program by email. So we'll have that at the table at town meeting. And thank you for having confidence in us.
Thank you, Joyce. All right, next item, wastewater update.
Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Lee Rowley and John Deliso of the Water Resources Advisory Committee to have some comments. And I have an update as well. And Dave Young from CDM Smith is here to follow up on some of your questions from previous presentation and to update you further as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope I'm speaking loud enough. My name is Lee Rowley. I'm a member of the Water Resources Advisory Committee. And to my left is John Deliso, also a member of the committee. I prepared a little bit of a handout that's part of my presentation, so that you can take it back and review it later. One thing I would like to make a comment on, the Water Resources Committee has not totally endorsed everything that may be on this document yet. But it's the general feeling of the committee. What I mean is, we haven't taken a formal vote on everything. So the recommendations we're eye-making are the general consensus of the committee, but they're not formal yet. Other members of the committee include Kurt Sears, who's the chairman, Rennie Hammond, Paul O'Brien, George Perkins, Tom Roach, Tom Durkin, and Spiro Mitro Costas. I think I got that right. As you know, the primary objective of the program is to get our water clean. The program is considered a long-term project with multiple phases that are expected to extend over the next forty years. So within that forty years, we expect that there will be changes as new technology comes about, as priorities change for the town. And so at this point, what we're really serious about is getting the first phase, which includes the treatment plant construction and the first phase of the main piping system that goes down 28. That is the key, we think, to this successful project. Couple of items under that are, we want to build the shared treatment plant. We think that the DHY plant is the best alternative for Yarmouth. Ultimately, that'll be your decision, but we have done extensive reviews, and we think that from a cost-effective point of view and from a management point of view, this would be the best alternative. Part of that also is that Yarmouth will have three members on the commission, as, as the agreement still stands right now. And you also have control of all of the construction activities within the town of Yarmouth. This is important, because as we go along, you'll be able to make a decision as to whether you want to change the program and see how, how well we're moving along. Is it actually going to take forty years? It could take twenty. But the reason it's stretched out to forty years right now is this forty-year period works out well with the payback paying for the cost of the program. We think that the, the greatest opportunity for return on investment will be Phase One. We'll be bringing the utility in to service all of the commercial areas along Route 28, and will give us a greater opportunity to get a quicker return on our investment. This is also the area where most of the, I would say, intensity of the wastewater is being produced. It also opens the opportunity for economic development, and that is also key to helping to pay for the initial phase and some of the future phases. We think that if, if the commercial tax base expands because of this, that this will take some of the tax burden off of the residential tax base. And in that way, it's a win-win situation, because if the commercial produces enough revenue, you will have the choice of using that revenue to pay for future projects in the residential areas, or taking the burden off the taxpayers, the residential taxpayers. One of the reasons we wanted to come before you now is that between now and May, we would like to expand our public relations program, so that we can educate the public. We have been conducting these town hall presentations to various organizations and inviting the public to, to listen to what we're doing and to get, get them to understand how important this program is. Beyond doing the presentations, which we think are pretty effective, we would like to send out mailers, either direct mail or through the water bills, the quarterly water bills, to go out. Doing it with the quarterly water bills kind of guarantees that every household will get the information in advance of the town meeting. And in order for us to do that, we'd like the Board of Selectmen to make some decisions and make some commitments and make a determination as to which way we're going to go with the program, either going with DHY or going it alone, and making decisions about the funding on the program. The, these decisions are, are important, because in the, in the brochures that we would send to the house, households, they, we want the information as accurate as possible. And we would like to say that the Board of Selectmen is behind the program. I have a list of recommendations. These are really not formal recommendations, but it's the general consensus of the, of the Water Resources Advisory Committee, and they're listed here, one through four. The first one is, we have reviewed the agreement with, for the DHY, and we think it's a very reasonable agreement. It still may be up for, for tweaking as you meet with the other two towns, but we think overall, it's a very good agreement. And this agreement will cover the design, construction, and operations of the treatment plant, and in some cases, the, the delivery systems, the piping systems, that are shared between one or more towns. one or more towns. Those are all the items that are included in the management, the construction and management of the systems that are going to be in the DHY system. The second item I have is we are recommending establishment of a water infrastructure and investment fund at an annual rate of 1.5% surcharge. We know that there's various options that the Board of Selectmen need to look at as to where you're going to get that 1.5% surcharge. We're not recommending where you get it, we're just recommending you get it to help pay for the system. We think that this 1.5% is the backbone of the financing plan that we have previously recommended. And I personally think that it's up to the Board of Selectmen to determine what your priorities are for the town of Yarmouth and make the right decision. And I think this program is so important that some decision needs to be made to find that money in the right and spend it in the right area. We also recommend establishment of a Clean Water Enterprise Fund, which would receive 25% of the capital surcharge, would receive a 25% capital recharge, surcharge on the sewer rates. And also, it would receive grants and betterment program funds. Those betterments would come in as the system is constructed and then reallocated to pay the cost of either that system that went in or future systems. There is some idea about taking some revenues from solar PV projects as well. We also are recommending that the town, the Board of Selectmen should make a decision on the short-term rental tax revenues. We think you should grab 100% and apply it to this program. In conclusion, the above recommendations, above is recommended in order to avoid applying capital project, program costs to annual general taxation and begin prefunding of the plan in FY 2021 to establish a capital reserve in advance of program, the program I wasn't here in 2011, but I've heard a lot about what took place there, and it's my understanding, based on what people have told me, that one of the reasons why people came forward and shot the program down was because it was proposed to put it on the tax base. And when we started this investigation, looking into alternatives and developing this program, we were of the understanding that there's a mandate here from the Selectmen, not really stated purely, but that you wanted to do this program without putting the burden on the tax base. And I think the program we have laid out here does that. John?
First, I want to thank the members of the board for the opportunity to participate. Been involved with the Water Resource Advisory Committee a little over a year, and it's been a very educational process. Just a brief story. In 1961, I was 16 years old. I've spent all, a part of every year of my life on Cape Cod. In that year, I met a gentleman who was of some international repute, enormously wealthy individual, he traveled the world, he'd been everywhere. And I'll never forget the conversation. He said to me, "You know, John, this is about the nicest place I've ever been, Cape Cod." I never forgot that conversation. So, as I traveled in my career over the years and went to a lot of places, I had that as a backdrop, and I always came back to Cape Cod, town of Yarmouth, my whole residential life on the Cape has been in Yarmouth. I said to myself, "You know, he was right." So, with that as a backdrop, we have a problem. We, Cape Cod, we've got a water quality problem extremely well documented at this point. It's affecting the ponds, the lakes, the estuaries, maybe affecting the drinking water. It certainly will in the years ahead if the problem doesn't become solved. We in the town of Yarmouth have an economic problem. If our water quality becomes degraded, we'll lose our tourism base. We've taken a real hit in commercial real estate, you know, we're, I think, we're down to single digits in terms of the percentage of the tax base. That's not a good long-term situation for the town. So, there's a solution on the horizon, and the solution is the one that this committee's been working on to build the wastewater treatment infrastructure facility. As it turns out, the timing is not just good, it's great. The planets have aligned in a way in which they may not for decades to come. I think we have a significant amount of public support, people are aware that there's a problem. We're in a kind of a unique window in terms of costs. Can't say it's inexpensive, but the financing of this project is almost a rarefied atmosphere. We are going to be eligible to borrow money at 0% through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I dare say that's a day that may not last long and may never repeat. The Tri-Town Agreement that's potentially part of the solution looks attractive. Bear in mind, in a project of this scale, there'll always be details, you know, you can pick apart anything, but if the big picture is always kept in mind, we've got to move, we've got to move in a reasonably timely way. We, the town, we, the citizens, can solve this problem. We have an interesting arrangement in terms of the clock tying in with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think it's been decades since the last time 28 got the amount of attention that it's about to get in the next couple of years with the intersection rebuilds and the bridge, two bridges, Parker's and Bass River. To the extent we can coordinate with the Commonwealth, we'll save a significant amount of money. If we fail, if we fail, it's not a pretty picture. The specter of litigation is sitting out there. The costs are going to go up. The town is going to lose control. The horizon is bright, and I don't like to talk about failure, but, you know, we are approaching deadlines, plural, whether we like it or not. So, as a member of the committee, I'm here to urge urgency, focus. You know, of the three towns in the agreement, where the lead in the sense that we'll have the most capacity in the plant, that's an interesting part, but it shouldn't be, you know, a centerpiece of a conversation. We do have the ability, as the largest town within the three, I think, to lead the way. And I think to the extent that the town of Yarmouth can get this job done, which I'm 99% certain this will be the biggest project the town has ever undertaken, it'll be a great example, you know, for the rest of the Cape and beyond. And best part of it will be, you know, a real service to the citizens of the town. So, my thoughts. So, questions?
Well, before we take questions, let me just, Dave Young is here and wants to give you updates on some of the information that you had asked about, and also, just to summarize and pull together the comments of John and Lee and the sentiment of the committee, this slide time says it all. The census is now is the time to take some action for various reasons that they've laid out. I've been working for over a year now, I've done three general public information sessions, approximately a dozen small group meetings of 10 to 20 to 30 people at a time, dozens of individual meetings and conversations. They've developed four public information pieces that are available, been widely distributed throughout town and on social media, and they have a lot more to come. Direct mailings, whether through the water bill or through a direct mailing service, a couple of videos currently in production that should be available very soon, and a lot more information to get out. All of that's being done in coordination with the efforts of the DHY Working Group, who is also producing some information that would like to get out once we have some direction on that. So, the recommendations that Lee alluded to, we'll be taking up some more at the upcoming meeting, the first Monday of November, and likely the first Monday of December, leading up to a meeting, another update to the Board of Selectmen on December 17th. But the three that are on the table now is moving forward with deliberations and finalizing a direction on the DHY agreement, consideration of the Water Resource Enterprise Fund and implementation of 1.5% water infrastructure fund surcharge. And so, what I'm going to show you tonight is part of my update, is what I'll be presenting to the Water Resource Advisory Committee at their next meeting as far as a cost recovery plan, and it'll be a much more, you just have the summary, the one-pager. I'll have a much more detailed document for them, which will then get forwarded to you as well as they come up with a recommendation, and also, working with that committee to come up with a recommendation, formal recommendation to the board for DHY. So, my final little piece here of the update is on the cost side, and then I'll introduce Dave, I'll have Dave come up and do his piece. But we've updated this for new information. We were concerned over the cost estimates, and as you heard, we had some good news on the DPW facility, hopefully that would continue, but we've built in a contingency into this plan since it's of such magnitude. And so, at this point, our Yarmouth-only option, and I've compared them, since we've been talking, narrowing down to a couple of options here, Yarmouth-only option is $132.5 million, DHY is $126.7 million, about a 4% to 5% savings on capital. But really, the important part here is an additional $1 million of operating costs saved each year. And when you talk about, do we have an affordable sewer rate, an affordable capital, 25% capital surcharge on that sewer rate, does it keep it affordable if we're, if our operating costs are 3.5 plus million dollars versus the 2.5 million dollars? And that's a significant factor. We do think we can get that cost down through various opportunities, regional opportunities, other regional opportunities like with Barnstable, roadwork coordination and final design. And our estimates here are based on a feeling that particularly with a regional approach, that we would be in a very good position to land a 0% loan through the state SRF program. And so, if that assumption were used, that would result in debt service of about $4.4 million a year for Yarmouth-only option, $4.2 million for the DHY option. And just for an order of magnitude here and a sense of it, if it were a 1% loan, and I'm averaging and simplifying all these things over a recent first 15-year period, so we don't have a huge range of numbers to have on our mind, I'm making it very simple. 1% is about $1 million a year, and 2% is about $2 million a year. So, 20 to 40 million additional over the life of the loan. So, how do we do that without getting it on the general tax rate impact? Well, that's what I'm hoping to show you on the next slide, but just for a frame of reference, if it were on the tax rate, that $126.7 million would be about 68 cents per thousand, or $68 per 100,000 evaluation. So, how do we do it without that cost? Well, this is similar to what you've seen in the past, but I've just updated it for the latest information, and on the top, you see the annual debt service costs side by side, and the next item down is how we fund for that, fund for those items. The Water Infrastructure Fund at this point, based on our tax levy and anticipated growth in that levy because of new projects coming onboard, be about $1,450,000. The user-generated revenues, which is the capital surcharge and 25% surcharge on your user rate, and the betterment program, which is roughly 20% of the Phase 1 collection system, is about $1.1 to $1.2 million, depending on the option. Dedicated local receipts is the solar PV, and an estimate of $570,000 of estimated new short-term rental taxes that we'd have to shepherd through the budget process or otherwise restrict or dedicate towards the program through a policy or town meeting action. And then finally, the largest uncertainty of all these items is the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust. It's only had three meetings to date, but we have had some meetings with some other participants on that board and understand that they've come to a realization that they have a charge to distribute that money in an equitable basis, and we'll be certainly providing our ideas for what that means for Yarmouth. And we are estimating that Yarmouth has upwards of $1.6 million per year, I should say, the Yarmouth community, hotels and private rentals within Yarmouth generate about $1.6 million a year to the trust. And so, our plan here is taking 25% of project cost, which is a planning number that other communities have used, which would generate about $1 million to $1 million one in funding, which is less than what the Yarmouth community is contributing per our estimates. But of all those things, those estimates are what provide risk, and as John Deliso pointed out, we're never going to know everything we need to know, and at some point, we need to make a leap of faith, and I think this represents a good plan and a target that we can try to execute. The total of all that funding comes to about $4.3 million on the DHY option, first is the $4.2 million of projected debt service, which means we'd have a surplus of $75,000. Again, this is on average over the first 15 years, and I've rounded to make it simple for this presentation. The reality is, which would be in the final plan that I'm submitting to the Water Resource Advisory Committee, is a year-by-year analysis, which shows that some years might be a little bit short, and as things grow over time, you get these surpluses. And so, as Mr. Rowley alluded to, one of the recommendations was a Water Resource Enterprise Fund, which would accumulate all these sources of money and accumulate the prefunding that's being proposed in fiscal year '21, so that we could bank several million dollars in advance of having to pay this debt service, which is projected to start in the year 2025. The last element I added here, because it's a consideration that we've been talking about, partly because of the article related to the District Improvement Financing, the DIF article, which raises to top of mind that there is some economic impact to this, and I want to reiterate, the primary reason the Water Resource Advisory Committee discusses everything they discuss every month is water quality and drinking water, but recognizing that there is a potential for some economic development, and I remind you of the UMass Donahue Institute report, which indicated about $100 million of pent-up demand for redevelopment on existing properties in accordance with current zoning. And so, that $100 million would translate to roughly about $1 million of new property tax growth, and I phased that in over a 12-year period, little by little, just to have a realistic rollout of that. On the average of that for the first 15 years is about $700,000. On the average of that for the first 15 years is about $700,000. And so, we're not relying on that on our financing plan, but I wanted to put it there as our backstop, so to speak, in the event that some of these estimates don't come through or we can't execute on the plan, or the Water Protection Trust doesn't distribute the money as the way we might hope that they do, we have something else to fall back on. And so, if you add that into plan, it shows that we're pretty well-funded. But again, that in and of itself is also an estimate. So, that's the quick and dirty funding plan. Before we get to your questions, I know there's some particular questions about how did you arrive at those costs, and are all the costs the same across the board? And that's why Dave Young is here to discuss and do an update on that. In your packets, you do have a memo from CDM Smith regarding how they approached these estimates, not only to cost, but also based on the flows. And also, you have work that was done internally by our planning and economic development staff on the work they did related to flow projections as well. So, if that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As Rich mentioned, you did have a cost memo in your packet, I believe, that we had prepared based on a lot of the questions that have been fed to us that had come up at some of your previous meetings. So, while I'd like to cover some of the things that were done in the previous presentation that we gave you back in September, I'll just cover those briefly and try to cover and go through that memo generally during this presentation, which I'll go through fairly quickly. But, be happy to answer any questions or walk you through the memo afterwards during your question-and-answer period. As you just heard from Lee and John, the Water Resource Advisory Committee Proposed Phase 1 Plan and Addresses the Nitrogen in Three, your three main watersheds, being Lewis Bay, Pockers River, and the Bass River watersheds, picks up the largest water users, meaning you're collecting the most nitrogen for the amount of piping you're putting in, serves as the main spine of the system, meaning future phases would actually feed into that system, provides some significant economic development, and you've seen the Donahue Institute Report referenced, and provides flexibility for some adaptive management approaches going forward. This is just a photo or a figure of the area. The shaded, all the shaded areas are ultimately areas proposed to be part of your collection system, sewered, but the tan or brownish areas are what's proposed to be in Phase 1, which is really the, all the abutting properties to Route 28 from Barnstable over to the Dennis Line, and then down the properties, abutting properties down South Shore Drive area. This is how the eight-phase program puts together the projected flow amounts. The flows have been generated based off of the Massachusetts Estuaries Project Report, and they looked at three years of flows, but we've actually looked at five years of flows, 2012 through 2017 of your existing flow by parcels. And they also looked at what's known as a build-out flow, and that means based on your current zoning, what could be built, doesn't say when it would be built, but just that something could be built on that parcel. And so, if it was a resident that could be built, a typical water use for that watershed was then applied to that unbuilt parcel and included in the projections. You can see Phase 1. That actually has some additional allowances built into it above the build-out flow, and that was based off the memo that I believe you have in your packet. Karen Green and Kathy Williams put a lot of effort into going through and looking at what the Mass Estuaries Project Report had included, which they had included some build-out numbers and some flows above that. But, based on the economic study, Karen and Kathy went through almost a lot-by-lot analysis, look what lots might be able to be aggregated, did a pretty sophisticated analysis, and they recommended an additional 280,000 gallons be put in there. So, that's shown in that build-out number there of a little over 900,000 gallons per day. But, just to point out here, while I have this slide up, if you added up your flows for the first four phases, that comes to about 2.2 million gallons per day of capacity need. So, remember that, because I'll talk about that in a minute when we get into the DHY agreement, because that's one of the questions that keeps coming up. Just to give you a brief update, the actual special legislation was signed by the governor last week on October 11th. So, the special legislation is approved. And again, what that does is it just allows the DHY Clean Waters Community Partnership to be formed, should the communities decide at town meeting to approve the agreement. So, that's good news. The first major hurdle has been covered. The flows as currently projected for the build-out in each of the three towns, comprehensive wastewater management plans, as shown on this figure, a little under 2 million gallons from Dennis, a little under 1 million gallons from Howard, and that's the portion that's not going to Chatham. And then, a little over 3.5 million, and that includes the additional flow allowance that was just recommended for Yarmouth of a little over 3.5 million gallons per day, for a total of 6.5 million gallons at build-out, so that's, you know, roughly the 40-year number. And then, you can just see the associated percentages. This is a plan that just shows the phasing as currently constituted in the three towns and how it might fit together, how the puzzle fits together from each of the communities. Howard is looking to do some re-phasing in order to do that, so they're moving some of their phases around, still to be finalized, but this is the current plan as they're looking at it. These cost tables we presented to you back in September, this is just for the shared facilities. And again, this is for any shared conveyance, which means if there's a common pumping station that the three towns pump to, and then that flow is conveyed to the treatment plant. Other options are currently still being evaluated, but it's mainly for the treatment plant and then the F-1 recharge sites. So, this shows the column, if the town were to do it on their own, or the regional column, if you were to do it as part of the DHY partnership, shows the capital cost and the O&M costs. And again, these are at build-out numbers, not initial. And then, we did an equivalent annual cost to compare capital and O&M, and then the percent savings over on the right-hand side. So, as you can see, each community in these shared facilities is looking to save some significant dollars. This breaks out the Yarmouth costs in more detail, and this is for your full program, not the shared program. So, you can see the majority of your cost is in the collection system. And the cost memo that we provided to you breaks out how we generated the cost for the collection system, how we generated for conveyance, how the cost for the treatment plants, for the F-1 recharge sites, and for the non-traditional, as well as how the O&M cost for each of those was calculated. So, again, the vast majority of the collection system stays under full control of the town of Yarmouth, that being your 324 million of the 456, so roughly 75% of the cost, totally under the control and timeframe of the town of Yarmouth. It's only the treatment plant and F-1 recharge that would be with the DHY Commission. And this shows the numbers that Rich was just showing in his cost recovery program for Phase 1. So, again, the collection system of your 132, 47 of that is for your collection system. The treatment plant, because that's being built to cover, right now anyway, proposed, that can change once the commission is formed, and the three towns may decide to only do the first three phases. We've just put an example out showing the first four phases. So, if that were the case, Yarmouth's share would be the 54 million versus if you were doing it on your own, you'd be paying over 74 million, and on down the list. As mentioned briefly, there are some other programs that we're looking to save costs with, and you've seen this. This is the work that's proposed along Route 28 by the Mass Department of Transportation. If we can try and dovetail in with that work, we're already providing some design input to the Bass River Bridge and the North Main Street intersection, which is sort of next up on the list after they do the intersection over in Barnstable at Yarmouth Road. But, the other section of Route 28 has some significant work to be done, and we want to make sure that everything is done there. That's the area that, that main interceptor was designed back in 2010, 11, but we need to check and make some modifications to that. As you also heard Rich say, that right now, your program, cost recovery program is based off accessing 0% interest loans. That is only 30% of the state revolving fund that they have every year, so it's a competitive process. And being part of a regional program gains you a significant amount of points. Prime example is Howard's just got 0% interest for their sewer system that's currently under construction, because they're doing that regionally with Chatham. There are other communities out there that put a sewer system out that didn't get 0% interest because it was just a straight program. So, if, you may not know what you would get if Yarmouth went on their own, but you have a higher chance of accessing those, again, only a third of the bucket is at 0%. But, if you do do that, you also have to meet five other criteria. And that is, it has to be nutrient-related, which it would be, cannot be subject to any type of enforcement or court order. You have to have an approved comprehensive wastewater management plan, which you do, and we would be in the process of updating that with what's known as a notice of project change. It has to be consistent with the Regional Water Resources Plan, which the Cape Guard Commission has already reviewed your prior plan, and it is. And the fifth one is probably the one that will have the most debate, and that is, you have to adopt what's known as land use controls, which means you have a management system in place to manage to the flow projections that you are listing in your comprehensive wastewater management plan. And that's why it was very important for your planning staff to go through and do those flow projection numbers. If you don't access 0% interest, you would probably qualify as a minimum for the 2% interest loans as part of that. Instead of, you know, you discussing your different interest rates earlier, you would probably do 2%. And Yarmouth currently does qualify for some form of principal forgiveness, even though that rate changes also on an annual basis. I'm just briefly going to run through these. We covered these back in September, but the draft agreement is currently back for review with each of the different three communities. Different Boards of Selectmen are reviewing, refreshing their memories. We had the three-town meeting last month, local input being provided. Each of the subgroup representatives are working with that, and if there are comments that float back up to the local representatives, then they would bring it to the DHY subgroup if they felt it's worthy of further discussion and hasn't been discussed prior to. And then, that would be debated at that subgroup level as well, to figure out whether additional tweaks to the agreement need to be made. I think there's general agreement that the draft that's out there now, which is on the website, available to anyone in the public, is in pretty good shape and pretty well, pretty much agreement from all three towns. But, again, everyone's looking at that. And it is modeled after what I think is pretty well-accepted as the very successful MFN, Regional Wastewater District for Mansfield, Foxborough, and Norton, and you've heard, several of you have heard from those folks. Partnership currently proposed to be overseen by seven member commissioners, three from Yarmouth, two from Dennis, two from Howard. You may recall, that was a revision about nine months ago. It used to be two from Yarmouth, two from Dennis, and one from Howard. And Howard and Dennis both proposed that Howard get two. So, Yarmouth gained one, and Dennis stayed at two, and Howard went to two. And then, the Board of Selectmen, in Yarmouth's case, would be the ones to appoint the commission representatives from Yarmouth. These are the positions that that representative or the commission representative could come from. It was felt that they wanted to make sure that, you know, they were getting sort of professional or staff that they could, representatives that they could trust to represent Yarmouth's interests, as well as be a good steward of the commission. The budget process, I won't go through each of these. We've discussed this. This was actually the major change to the agreement, where the three-town Board of Selectmen meeting was put in to approve the budget, and requires a majority vote of those selectmen present at that meeting to approve that budget. There are also built-in requirements for non-financial issues, that four commissioners, one from each community needs to be there. Financial issues requires at least five commissioners be present and one from each community. So, there are other qualifiers in the agreement that helps with overseeing the budget. Simply put, the costs are a portion based on capital or operating. Capital are based on percent of flow ownership in the treatment plant, and the operating costs are split into two categories, semi-fixed, which again is proportion based on the percent ownership in the plant, and flow variable, which is based on the amount of flow a community sends to the plant, based on a 12-month rolling average. And that is for electricity, chemicals, and solids disposal only. All the others, staffing and those types of things, would be in the fixed category. The proposed next steps, as I said, the special legislation was passed last week. Subgroups are meeting, or the DHY subgroup continues to meet monthly. We just met last Friday. There are several meetings going on at the local level. There's a proposed, date hasn't been set, but probably mid-December, mid-late December of this year for a three-town Board of Selectmen meeting. I promise you, I'll sit the Howard Board of Selectmen in between Dennis and Yarmouth, just following with the alphabet. And the selectmen hopefully will endorse or not the DHY agreement at that time, but the DHY subgroup felt it was very important to have the agreement locked down, so to speak, by the end of this year or early January, so that then, as you heard earlier, each community can go out and do their education piece to each community, different committees, what have you, leading up to their April or May town meeting next spring. Should that be approved at the towns, town meetings by majority vote, then going forward, the DHY agreement would be signed June-July timeframe. Commissioners would be appropriate, or be appointed. Each community would either file their final or do a notice of project change, so that they would again have an approved plan for financing funding. There is a, due to Representative Whalen and the other Cape delegation, they got a $1 million earmark put into the environmental bond bill, which can only be accessed if the DHY is actually formed. And then, the commission ultimately would be up and running, select an executive director, move into design, which would probably be a year and a half, two years, and then into construction, which would be two to three years prior to connections actually taking place. So, with that, I think any of us would be happy to take questions.
George? Give me a question.
Page full so far. We've got an awful lot of material to absorb that we've received tonight, but, you know, first of all, I wanted to thank our wastewater resources committee for...
first of all, I wanted to thank our wastewater resources committee for the presentation tonight, and your encouragement to present positions so we can move forward with communication. Now, that's, the communication is important, and I'm not sure that just one mailing is sufficient. I think the idea of putting that in the, with the water bills, it certainly will get everybody's attention. But I think that the, given the volume of material and the importance of this, I think a self-standing mailing as well as a additional information, so that we don't overwhelm people with one huge document, is something that would be important. And, you know, there's an old saying about, people don't start to understand change until they've heard about it five times. And, you know, there's, there's a lot out there of, there's a lot of people out there that are just asking, is anything happening with wastewater? I mean, they're at that stage. And so we've got an awful lot of communication to do. So, you know, there's a combination of things that need to be done. But I think getting something in front of people in their hands is key, and doing that a couple of times, in my view, is something that's important.
So to that, Selectman Holcomb, we did hear you from your last time, and working on a program that I'll be putting in front of the Water Resource Advisor Committee at their next meeting for a direct mailing through, hopefully, all over the town. We have at least three pieces that we'd like to send out, and we think we've identified a vendor that can provide that service to us at a pretty low cost, which is even better. So we'll be following through on that.
That's great to hear. Words are important in that. You know, back at the previous vote that occurred, the town meeting vote that turned down the previous proposal. After that, we had meetings and with then-town administrator Bill Hinchi, and talked about, how do we move forward? How are we going to address this for the future? And at that time, our board said, look, the first thing is, if we, if we don't show people how we can do it without increasing general taxes, we'll never get through this through town meeting. So give us a plan. This is the charge that we gave to Bill Hinchi, and Rich Benvenu participated in that. Give us a plan that will work without general taxation. And they came back with recommendations, a variety of funding sources, including the CPA, part of the CPA funding included a real estate tax, a real estate sales, what's the term, Rich?
Transfer tax.
Transfer tax, thank you. And a whole host of other things. Now, some other sources of revenue have been substituted in the meantime. My point on this is, choice of words is really important. And I go back to this summary. And to the second page of your note with regard to, we recommend establishment of a water and investment fund at an annual rate of a one-and-a-half percent surcharge. One-and-a-half percent of what? One-and-a-half percent of property values? Is that what you're saying?
It's a property tax surcharge equivalent to what the CPA surcharges on property taxes.
Okay. My point is, choice of words is very important. If we say to people, we're going to have a one-and-a-half percent water infrastructure property tax surcharge like we've got on this schedule, they're going to close down. And I won't vote for that. I can tell you that upfront. And I don't think that a majority of people in this town will vote for it. So, you know, I think we've got to be very careful with any communications that indicate that. And I, we've got to find a way to fund this without a property tax surcharge, and to avoid words that say, we're going to have a property tax surcharge. I have a lot of other questions. I'll let somebody else jump in and then come back and...
I'm comfortable ceding my time to you, Norm, if you have anything.
May I just, I'm comfortable too with letting you go ahead, Norm, because you may ask some of the questions that we all have. But may I just ask what the intent of the 1.5% language was? We, I mean, you put it on us. You essentially said, we don't care how you do it, just go get it. Well, we have an idea how to get it. We're going to take it from the CPA. What's your idea? Was that your intent? Or are you telling us to go get it from the taxpayer that is general tax?
No, we're not, we're not telling you how to do it.
No. I didn't know if your intent was to follow along with what we have proposed, was to split the 3% with the CPA, or if you were proposing what your, what the language in your handout says was a 1.5% surcharge.
So we had, following along with discussion from 2016 with Bill Hinchi, we're along those same lines. But in the discussion with the Water Resource Advisor Committee, they didn't necessarily want to be presumptuous in making the decision for the CPC. So kind of in the vein of minding their own business, they recommended what they thought that they needed, with the understanding that you'll be talking to the CPC in the upcoming month about what they think their needs are. And then, but, you know, I think the intention all along is, we understand that a 3% property tax surcharge that currently exists in town is probably where the direction we're trying to go. How we get there is, you know, to be determined.
If I might, we had an extended discussion within the committee about this very point, and ultimately, the majority of the committee felt that one committee shouldn't be telling another committee what to do. So we see the one-and-a-half percent as important to fund the project, but we, as a committee, thought it best that we leave that decision to you.
The reason I brought it up is because the way, the way it's worded, which is why Norm brought it up, makes it sound like the recommendation is for us to go and assess an additional one-and-a-half percent property tax.
Right.
Okay. So that was not your intent?
No. We've, we've, we had talked about taking it from the CPC, but we feel, we all know that the CPA or the CPC is adamant that they want to control that money, and they want to get it, and they don't want it dedicated for wastewater. So our position is, it's not our decision. In fact, it's not even the CPC's decision. It's the board of selectmen's decision on how to do it.
It's the taxpayers.
The taxpayers.
And just as a point of clarification, it's, actually, none of all of our decisions. It goes to town meeting for a vote, and after a successful vote at town meeting, it goes to the ballot for a vote.
I just wanted to clarify that, just based on the wording and the handout, that was not necessarily your intention.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think what they're telling you is, they don't want the blood on their hands.
Yeah, really.
You got it. But the whole, the whole thing comes down to this. What is the priority for the town of Yarmouth? What do you feel is the priority? And then you have to make the decision as to how you want to present it to the taxpayers. And is CPC's projects more important than wastewater? Well, that's, that's up to you to decide.
You know, I don't think it's a choice of yes or no. I think, and I'm going to voice my own opinion at this stage. CPC is certainly currently funded with 3% surcharge on our property taxes, plus some state contribution of funds. So recognizing that, you know, wastewater is a significant priority and is extremely important to the development of the town for the future, I think that a portion of the CPC funding needs to be dedicated for some period of time, for some period of time, not forever necessarily, but for some period of time, to wastewater. And, you know, my, my personal shot at this would be, okay, give it five to 10 years, and, and then come back and see what the growth has been in the town, what has been the response to having a searing system installed. And if we've realized the projections, then reconsider at a, at a future point what the CPC funding might be. And, you know, if we've got revenues flowing in from new growth and are able to dedicate those to the payment of the cost of searing system, then certainly reconsider CPC funding. And, you know, again, and, you know, five to 10 years down the road, there'll be, you know, a certain number of projects that will be ready to line up, you know, for those funds at that period of time if they're available. But I think we have to recognize the economic realities for our town at this stage with so many priorities. We just can't simply keep going to the taxpayers and demanding more and more and more. So, you know, again, my view only, I'm not speaking for the board as, as a whole, but I certainly think that, you know, as I said, you know, five, five-to-10-year dedication of funds from the current CPC funding to wastewater is, is something that makes sense to me.
If I could say one, one thing, Norm, in looking at the Donahue Report and seeing the trend of the commercial tax base dropping off every year, is a clear indicator that Yarmouth has to do something.
Right.
If Yarmouth decides not to build a system, and our neighbors continue to do their share and build a system, all the development's going to go there and not here. We're sitting in a really nice position if we can provide that utility. But if we don't, we're going to lose more of what we have. And all the burden is going to go on the residential taxpayers.
Yeah, I think that's very clear. It's, it's not easy to get that historical perspective across to people, but it is a message that we need to communicate, that, you know, our, our commercial growth has, has not been there, whereas it has been present in other communities. And we, in order to restore that and restore some balance of commercial versus residential, we need to do something, so. There's mention in, in the additional growth of 500 and some odd thousand, 580 some odd thousand gallons per day, I think, of new growth. One of the components of that is one of the more sensitive pieces of property in town with, on Forest Road. And if we propose development of that piece, we'll lose the votes of Captain's Village. This board has been in a position in the past to find other alternatives to the development of that piece. And, you know, I, I really don't believe we should be saying, we're going to support the development of that piece of property, because it'll be very sensitive to a lot of people in that area. There's a whole host of people all along Forest Road that will be really up in arms. I do have a question for Dave, but I want to make one other comment. And again, I'm representing my own views. And, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I commented about our representation with the DY board, the wastewater board. And again, I'll say, particularly, particularly in view of the actions of some of the Dennis people, Finance Committee in particular, with regard to other issues in which we're in partnership, I don't think we should ever be in a position, Yarmouth should ever be in a position where we cede our legitimate share of management to another town. And if we have 55% of the flow, we should have 55% of the vote. And I, I will have a very difficult time voting for a partnership where I have serious doubts about the, another party, and we have ceded some of our participation in that to the other parties. So the last question I think I have is on the projected savings, and this is for Dave, is the projected savings at this point are based upon total build-out?
Well, I'm looking for one of the tables if I can answer one of your questions that you had on the Forest Road parcel. Those flow estimates did not designate a amount of flow to any given parcel. They looked at it globally. So that flow increase was designated for that watershed. It would be up to your land use controls.
I'm just reading what it says.
So that was, I'm not disagreeing that that's how it was done, but when you create your land use controls, you would designate flow for that watershed, and then you would designate who gets the flow first come, first served. A whole process would need to be put together, and we provided some examples from other communities who approved that. But yes, they went through parcel by parcel to come up with an idea if certain parcels had been developed, but it was a global number that was put forth.
Well, excuse me, Dave, but what it says is, new parcels to be sewed, existing Matikes, Village Green, and Housing Authority land at Forest Road. So that's what it says.
Again, those were considered in generating a global number. There was not a flow proportioned to a specific parcel. To answer your question that you just raised...
As I said, words are important.
No question. We appreciate the comment. To answer your question, or try to answer your question, this is the global, your whole program. This is the build-out. This is 40 years out. But the next one, this is your phase-one cost.
Okay. So at phase-one, we're saying the, I can't see the bottom there because of that laptop that's in the way.
It's 8.77 versus 7.58.
7.58.
Savings, so about 1.2 million.
So it's saying our annual cost will be about, thank you. Our annual cost savings would be in the neighborhood of...
About 1.2, 1.3.
Yes, okay. All right. Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark's gone.
Okay.
Tracy's gone.
It's up to you.
Do you have any questions?
Does that mean I'm up?
Oh.
I'm sorry. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight and for your comments and suggestions. I think, you know, I was here in 2011, and I was opposed to that particular project. And I think the only reason that it got trounced at town meeting was the, the fact that a large portion of the cost was put on the tax rate. And to your point about... And to your point about, you know, this board's commitment and support of the project, the reason I'm, you know, I'm supportive of it this time around is because it's not on the tax rate. And because it's not on the tax rate, I don't see any reason why the people of this town would be opposed to it. There's simply no reason to. You know, the majority of the comments we got last time were, you know, there are people who would have been paying for it that will never hook up to it. You know, the other, another popular comment was the fact that, you know, you shouldn't have to, if you have a three-bedroom home that's worth $1 million, shouldn't be paying on that rate, which would be substantially more than somebody with a five-bedroom home that was worth $300,000. Shouldn't be linked to property values, was the argument. We've done away with all those things. So, again, I feel much more confident that if we can avoid any increase in taxes, that I think there's no reason for it not to be successful. Now, if you want to doom it, then, you know, the rumors are out there that there's going to be a proposal to, you know, do a 1% general assessment on the, assessment on the tax rate and take 1% from CPA. I think that will kill the project. I think if you really want to kill it, go ahead and do that. But I feel confident that this, you know, this is definitely a priority to me this time around. I think that the discussion of whether it's a solo venture or a joint venture with a couple of other towns, that is a much bigger conversation that we're going to have, and I'd rather not get into it quarter after nine. But, you know, in conclusion, I think that, again, there's really no reason, this is a priority for the people. I think that the general public is much more aware of the water quality issues we have. I don't think there's anybody out there, even in the last go-around, that disagreed that water quality was important, because it is. Everyone could agree on that, they just couldn't agree on how to get there. And now I think we have a way to get there that will be acceptable and much more agreeable. So, that's really all I have. I mean, that's, I don't know what else there is to say, but I think we need to avoid any appearance, whether implied or not, of increasing taxes. You know, I think we have to work with what we have, and the numbers show that we certainly can do that. I mean, it may be difficult, it's going to be a tough pill for some to swallow perhaps. You know, it's going to take a little bit of good luck and, you know, projections living up to their anticipated potential, but, you know, I feel good about it. And as someone who was opposed, you know, I was, Tracy and I were opposed and we're still sitting here, so that tells you something. But we were the only ones, we were the only ones that were on this board back then, too. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mark. Yeah, I'd like to join the other members on the board in thanking you for all your time and energy. I know sometimes the meetings get long and the discussions take a long time, but we do appreciate all the work that you put into this very much, and we appreciate you coming here tonight. I think it's, one of the things that I'm looking at is, I'm sort of trying to think ahead to next spring, and I, not that I want to get too far ahead of myself, but I'm trying to sort of queue up and think in my own mind, you know, what's that town meeting warrant likely to look like? I'm thinking there'll probably be a need for an article creating a, I mean, let's assume just for the sake of discussion, we're all in agreement and everything's fine. All right? So, it's, in my own mind, I'm thinking, what are the things that will have to be on the warrant? What are we going to have to do? An article creating a water infrastructure fund, right? You've mentioned this idea of a water enterprise fund of sorts. I'm assuming that will probably need an article to create that, and that's where the short-term rental funds will go. So, we'll probably have to do that at, what, at every annual town meeting, make sure that we set aside sufficient funds for the enterprise fund that we create?
Just like any other enterprise fund, you would allocate the revenues.
Just so that everybody knows. No, because what's happening is there different, there's a lot of, what adds to the confusion is the complexity. Other towns are insisting that they create a water stabilization fund. Barnstable's done that, other towns are doing that. We've had some brief discussion about that. But it may very well be that what you're proposing is perhaps accomplishes the same thing, but it's less cumbersome and probably easier to implement. So, there'll have to be something on that. I think if you make an increase, if we were to, at least given the current policy of no property tax increases, then there would have to be an article making an adjustment on the CPA to make an adjustment. So, whatever ultimately that looks like, if there's no increase, there's going to have to be some kind of adjustment. And then we'll have to be a vote on that. We'll have an article, we'll have to have an article, let's assume that we all agree on the DHY agreement. So, there'll probably have to be an article on the DHY agreement. Now, I'm on Article Four now. I'm assuming to fund cap, we'll have to fund capital. Is the number 132 million or 26 million? What's that number for, again, I'm just thinking next spring and then maybe the following town meeting, but what's that number going to be? I'm assuming if we're funding a substantial portion of that, we'll probably need something on the ballot as well. On the list of things to do was land use controls. I'm assuming that will involve an article, maybe several articles. No? Is that not necessary?
That's welcome.
So, we won't have to do any articles with respect to land use controls? That's something that can be done separate from any town meeting action. That's us. We do that, okay? Just, again, I'm trying to identify the thing, I'm looking ahead, trying to identify, after we get through, this fall town meeting, it's next week, we'll be through it, and then we'll be, all of a sudden, we start to grind the gears and get ready for the spring. So, I'm just trying to identify, what is this town meeting warrant likely to look like? And so, I'm just, I just keep adding it up. So, can you answer the question, Rich or somebody?
Yes.
Is there going to be, will there be an appropriations article and roughly magnitude, ballpark, what is it likely to be?
Well, once we get through where we're going, right?
Yep. Again, I'm assuming there, you know, all roads are going fine.
We would likely have an appropriation article because it wouldn't make, you know, for example, if you agreed, if town meeting agreed to join DHY, if that eventually happened, it wouldn't make much sense to join them and not put any funding on the table. And so, you'd need money available to do that, and the order of magnitude of that, I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but certainly would probably be design money at the very least.
At the very least. Okay. So, that, I've counted, I think, a total of six articles. Yeah, I think it would be helpful for, at least for our planning purposes, even to have a rough draft proposal, just having something to give us an idea, because it also, from a communications point of view, if there's at some point going to be a more aggressive communication strategy, you know, we'll have to have that in mind. This is confusing enough for a lot of people. So, we will need to be incredibly thoughtful in terms of how this effort is actually organized and communicated and messaged. As it is right now, it's a challenge sometimes just educating people on one article, let alone six. So, there's a lot, and we may want to decide as a board that, and with discussion with the town administrator and staff, that maybe it's best, maybe there's some things that might be able to wait until the fall. I don't know. But we need to start thinking now of just what it is in terms of action items for town meeting. They're the governing body for the town. They're the ones that are going to make a decision, so we ultimately will have to tee up for them. And there's no harm in at least thinking about what that might look like going forward. At least it crystallizes my thinking. That's the way I tend to operate. I think from town meeting to town meeting, what are the list of articles and decisions that we have to bring before a particular town meeting? So, in my mind, having even a rough draft, I think would be helpful because it'll also help frame us on what are the talking points or what are the items that are needed to educate people, so.
Mark, can I interject and add one thing that is not directly related but will indirectly have a tremendous impact?
Yeah.
It's probably going to have a new school on that, on that town meeting, too.
Did you hear that? Thank you. Right. This is the reason why some of us get very focused on some of the aspects like words, words matter, tax increase, is there, you know, and how we speak to these points, because it could be a very, very spring town, it looks like it's going to be a very busy spring town meeting. It really is. So, again, I don't, I, those are my comments, I just sort of lay that out. Once again, thank you, this has been incredibly helpful for us. I appreciate also, Mr. Chairman, the frequency of bringing this up. My hope is that if there's more frequency, the amount of time needed will hopefully diminish.
It hasn't so far.
I know, but I, and I benefit from hearing the other board members and hearing their questions because I pick up some of those concerns in the community as well. So, it's good to hear, get everybody involved in this conversation. I know it, it takes a lot of time, but I do think it's very worthwhile, and for the people that are watching at home, I think it's very informative, so.
Do you have, do you have a warrant from Brewster you could share with us and cover some of those issues? I'm sure Dan could come up with some examples of towns that have been through a similar process and had a warrant that devoted 30% of its time to wastewater.
No, but tell me, I mean, don't you think I'm going to mention something?
Your concerns are valid, yeah, and we need to plan ahead.
So, at the risk of extending the discussion too much longer, there are a few matters I did want to update you on. We did meet with the DHY subgroup and did address the issue, the two issues that the board has discussed, one with regards to language prohibiting pilot agreements, and that seems to have been accepted. And they did raise the issue of the representation, which will require further discussion. And that's why we're trying to set up three town board of selectmen's meetings so that at some level, you're going to have to sit face-to-face and have that discussion. And then finally, we are working with another firm that works, does work for the town of Harwich. You had talked about perhaps some level of peer review on some of these things, and we're trying to execute that. We do have a draft scope of services out there that we're getting, hopefully, a final price on, and the three towns have each committed, I can't say it's final yet, but we've each committed to funding a third of that to provide that type of high-level review to each of the three communities through the DHY process.
Okay. I want to thank John, Lee, Rich, Dave for your hard work and your presentations. I don't think we can get enough information on this issue. I always welcome updates and discussions and pointing out, you know, next steps and what problem areas are and so forth, and listening to my fellow selectmen and the excellent points that they bring up. I think that what Norm and Eric and Mark have talked about on messaging is correct, and I'm on line with that. I think we have to be very, very specific in terms of identifying where these funding sources are going to come from and make sure that there's no confusion as to whether some of these funds are going to come from the tax levy, because I was at that last meeting when this thing was overwhelmingly voted down, and I talked to a lot of people about it, and that was the concern about whether people could afford to pay for the system. And I do agree with the comments that if people perceive this as a tax burden on their property taxes, it's probably going to be a failure. So, because that was the, that was the underlying reason why it didn't pass before. I think people knew that we needed wastewater treatment, but they were afraid that they weren't going to be able to afford to live here or they couldn't pay their bills and things like that. The Norm's idea about independent mailing, a standalone mailing apart from, I think, water, is a great idea. I think it's important. This is complicated. We follow this. We've had many, many meetings, both with other selectmen, briefings from Dave and others. And again, I can't get enough of that. I think this is a really important project, and the more information and more discussion we have, the better off we're going to be in the last analysis. But the public isn't as tuned in as the people in this room are to this project, and we have to remember that. And so, maybe flyers at the, also at the libraries, maybe in Town Hall and other accessible places where people can pick something up and look at it, and even if they don't know, ask somebody, what's this? What's this all about? I sometimes am amazed when I, when I meet some very nice people from both towns, and there are some in Dennis, that's not a lot, but, no, I'm kidding. And they'll ask these very fundamental questions like, well, you know, are we going to have a school? Or is a school a good idea? It's like, are you kidding me? I mean, how long has this battle been going on? How long has this war been waged? And how could somebody not know about that? Well, people are busy and a lot of, you know, people have children and a lot of other commitments. They don't, they don't follow this like we do. So, we have to keep that in mind. And I think Norm had a great point about the language about building out down by Forest Road, and those people are very organized and vehemently opposed to that area being developed and have raised issues about flooding and a whole host of problems. And they would come out in numbers and oppose something if they thought that there was any imminent plans to build a project there. I know that just from running campaigns and dealing with those groups. So, you know, I don't have anything new to add to what the other selectmen have raised, but I do support their comments. I think we're all on the same page in terms of what the important things are that we have to do. You two gentlemen up there are the consummate politicians, you should be sitting here. Talking about a nebulous 1.5% tax. We all know where that's going to come from. But I respect the fact that you don't want to fight that fight. I appreciate that, because it's going to be a fight, I think. Well, thank you all very much.
If I could say one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I like Norm's idea of understanding, and I think this is what the committee did, is we looked at what was most important. What's the area that we, where we could tackle first and where could we get our best returns for funding? And I really think that the idea of looking at this thing as you're going to get a return on your investment over a period of time, we don't know what it's going to be, but if there's a pent-up demand out there and there's an opportunity to provide a utility that brings in more commercial development, not necessarily going higher or whatever, but filling in the gaps and getting that, and getting revenue that will come in, maybe we don't have to put so much emphasis on taking that money from CPC for an extended period of time. Maybe we, we get this money rolling in and then we give CPC what they want. And it's just a matter of setting the priorities.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is fiscal year '19, end-of-year financial update. Ed?
Hello, Ed Santiago, Finance Director.
Maria Rosova, Finance Administrative Assistant.
Maria has worked in the accounting department for a long time with the town of Yarmouth. She's a, has an accounting degree, she's a certified public accountant and, or governmental accountant, and she's also a certified procurement officer. And I think probably for the last four or five months, she's been our sole full-time accounting resource and has put in a lot of hours and effort to keep us afloat. We've just been able to hire another staff member. And then, one of these days, Rich will get a permanent job and we can replace him as He's so good, you want him everywhere, right? Okay. So, I'm sure you've gone through the package. well. He's so good, you want him everywhere, right? Okay. So, I'm sure you've gone through the, the packet deck. It's late. You can choose to just jump into some questions, if you like, rather than my going through the slides. And we can go to the slides if you have questions about those particular slides, or I can try to run through these slides very quickly, whatever is your pleasure.
Why don't you start with the slides, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay. All right. So, we've done this for a number of years, kinda giving you an update on the year-end results. So, you've seen this format and this packet for a number of years. All right. This slide just indicates from an S&amp;P standpoint, where S&amp;P at the time we did our last rating thinks that we're deficient. And what they're indicating we're deficient at is our budgetary performance. And what that means is that we're not budgeting more or enough over and above our expenses from an S&amp;P standpoint, from their rating standpoint. Everything else, we're very strong at, that we can control. And the things that are strong instead of very strong are more countywide or statewide indications.
Do they, do they quantify that and say by how much you're under budget?
That's correct, and we'll show you what, what that is. All right. This is just a rehash of the budget policies that the board passed a number of years ago. Again, the major highlight is don't use one-time money for reoccurring expenses. This policy just talks about what our revenue policy is. We've been in a practice of using 95%, but the policy says we can use up to 100% of previous year revenues. This particular slide, and I want to give Maria credit for filling out all the numbers in all of these slides. This shows where we are from a reserve standpoint. One of the benchmarks is from the GFOA. They indicate for, across the country, that we should be at a stabilization balance of 16.67% or basically two months of cash to run our operations, and that would be similar to a person having three months or six months of money in their bank account. So, if something happens, they are able to survive, you know, a tough patch. Right now, when we look at non-school-related, we're at 12.6%. But of course, if it's a bad economy, we're still gonna have to pay the schools, right? So, that percentage is 6.93%.
So, can I ask you, Ed, just to make sure I'm clear?
Yes, sir.
If we were to follow the GFOA recommendations, what, what should that number be in terms of stabilization?
Oh, I haven't calculated that number, but it would be 16% of $80,000.
Okay.
Want me to do the math now, or I can get that number to you?
What is it, Rich?
Twelve million, yeah. Close enough.
Okay. Close enough.
But, you know, just to comment on that, Ed, because, you know, I've read a lot of books on financial planning and, you know, that recommendation is out there that, you know, an individual or a family should have, you know, a three-month cushion.
Right.
And, but if you think of that as an analogy, you're ignoring the fact that an individual has risks like losing a job or something of that nature, or a major illness. We have risks at the municipal level, such as, you know, economic turn-downs and things of that nature.
Tornadoes.
But...
Now entered the equation for the first time.
But the stream of income is, once it's set on an annual basis, we could pretty much bank on it.
Not the local receipts, but you can for most of the real estate taxes. And however, we've seen dips in the real estate tax income as well. We've cleaned that up with our tax title policy, but we have seen significant deltas between what we have billed for real estate and have actually received, but we've cleaned that up recently in a good economy.
And I'm sure we're not gonna change the, the way the rating agencies think, but I, you know, to my way of thinking and the analogy and, you know, trying to say that individuals' guidelines, quote-unquote, should be the same as...
I'm not, I'm not saying that, neither is the GFOA. Again, the, the financial advisors actually suggest that individuals have more money than the government's doing. I think maybe that's your point, that we wouldn't have three to six months
Right.
of money in stabilization. We would have less than that. And that's part of what the board would decide, what level is appropriate for the town of Yarmouth.
But if I could just sort of add, I mean, if you look at the towns that have the AAA bond ratings, they're doing better.
They're doing much better than we are in terms of reserves, free cash.
Just, I'll get this out there and then I'll stop, but I'm concerned with all the debt and all the financing going on, that we need to be thinking about, I know financing is reasonable in terms of cost, but I think, I don't think it's unrealistic to be shooting for a AAA bond rating.
It will save us, we talked about saving interest over a 25, 30-year period. Yes, a AAA would definitely help us in that regard.
Right. And the reality is with all the financing that's going on, this is probably from, from my point of view, the most significant financial time in this town's history.
We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars, yes.
So, that's why I zero in on that stabilization number quite a bit, because it's an important part of how we finance our debt.
Absolutely.
So, I don't, I don't mean to belabor the point, Chairman, but I just wanted to sort of let people know where I'm coming from.
This gives you an indication of our free cash history. You dropped off 2008, just to fit everything in the slide, but as you see, in 2009, our free cash was $295,000. So, you can have a huge hit on your free cash based on declines in local receipts like motor vehicle excise, which is at 96% of where we were in previous years. One of the things, when you look at the free cash number, yes, it's higher than it has been in the previous years, but Medicare Part D is a one-time thing. That's never coming back. That's not a recurring revenue source. Additional investment earnings. Our Collector Treasurer has done a great job working over the banks for the best rates possible, and that number has ballooned considerably based on her efforts, and that's Sue Ripley. The construction and demolition expense, what we did was we paid using the previous year's free cash to give that to sanitation so they can earn more money. And what happened is, was we used last, you know, the previous year's to fund the expenses, but we got the revenue in 2019. If what we did was take that out of what might have been 2019 expenses and relocate those expenses, taking a risk that we would not have other deficits, our free cash number would have been down by at least $300,000. Again, we also supplemented snow and ice from the previous year. That's just a few highlights that come up to $900,000, and we can go over more and more examples as well, and we'll, we'll highlight some other features as well. And again, when we look at the Department of Local Services, which is part of the DOR, they're indicating that we should be spinning off 5% in free cash from operations. And I did, we did put a number there of $4 million versus the $3.4 million we spun off.
No, and I'm glad you did that, because I think it's important also, I mean, this is, if we're looking at finding ways to come up with monies to augment stabilization, it's, this is gonna be our first opportunity here, and if our free cash isn't to where it should be, then that makes it a very difficult decision to make. So, I, I have to applaud the town for, in recent years, doing what it has to boost the free cash position, because that's, that's been a huge...
And the economy has been a huge part of that, as, as it was in 2009, in the reverse. And the board set the policies, you know, the finance team, Rich, Bill, Peter came up with financial policies that the board approved, and that's the direction that we've been using to actually build these reserves. I just give you some indication of the highlights. Again, solid waste is the major contributor, but that was a contribution based on the fact that we used previous year's free cash. Motor vehicle excise, investments, again, that was a big number, and then you can go down the list. And again, Medicare Part D was a, was a major contributor. And then we look at other components as it relates to the expenses, where we gave back money. Fire wages, we had an allocation, increased the, the funding for fire. They didn't hire all of their staff on July 1, the additional four firefighters, and they had vacancies. And that's why we had additional money there. We had few, you know, energy, fuel, energy. We're doing a lot of conservation efforts, so maybe we can maintain, you know, some of that money coming back to the town. But you never know, what's the, is the winter gonna be really cold, and will we have a deficit in that area? You know, those are some of the things that we have to be conservative about. You know, we talked about Rich not being in, in the Accounting Department. There are wages there. We had some retirements, so we have town clerks and Collector Treasurers, you know, giving back money, which is not, doesn't normally happen because we've been fairly stable in, in our labor force, but, you know, a lot of our people are starting to retire. And then when you look at the components of wages versus other expenses, again, you know, you don't, but, you know, if you have a census count that you have in each particular department, you don't say, well, I think I'm gonna have a retirement, and I'm gonna have a big gap in hiring that new person. You fund up to the total amount of the wages for that particular department. When we look at free cash usage, we can use free cash to supplement and reduce our tax rate, kinda using a one-time source of money for reoccurring expenses. We can use it for contingent liabilities. We actually had, again, talking about the firefighters, we added four new firefighters. We added a person in the Police Department, the victims person. We've had retirements of people that have added to the OPEB burden, so we're actually having to add a little bit more. We, we're going along with $200,000 of contributions to OPEB. This year, we're gonna need $550,000. And that's one of the things that we can do because we have free cash. We can keep that OPEB liability fairly stable, although it did peak up a bit with the, with the new hires. Capital needs, as we've been discussing, putting money away for reserves or stabilization funds, and dealing with some of the unexpected challenges like the tornado situation that we had. So, those are some of the uses of the free cash. Any questions that you might have? Was that fast enough?
Was there some, were we gonna be asked to either approve something, or just, it was just a briefing?
Just a briefing, let you know where we are as you contemplate the budget process.
Appreciate that.
Thanks. Beat it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Maria. Okay. Warrant article recommendations. We're gonna have a, we've noticed a meeting for an hour before a town meeting, and Tracy's not here. Do we want to do our recommendations then, or do you want to go through them now? It's up to you.
There's one more, well, Kathy Williams, you wanna walk through the Planning Board information, Tom?
Which articles are those?
Four and five.
Four and five? Okay, let's do four and fives right now. Where's my Article 4?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for giving us some time. I know you had a busy schedule this evening. My name is Tom Roach. I serve as Chair of the Planning Board. You all know Kathy Williams. For you folks at home, she's Town Planner. And we have, we're here to talk about the two zoning amendments that we had talked about earlier. And we had a meeting, a public meeting, hearing attended by 10 members, public written comment was received. At the end of the public meeting, I think we voted to approve both Article 4 and Article 5. We have a slide presentation. It's pretty straightforward.
Do you want to go through all of that?
Well, I don't know if...
Well, go ahead.
Mike doesn't have benefit of being a former Planning Board member, so he needs to see the slides.
Yep. Picture's worth a thousand words.
Well, I didn't think you wanted to hear all the text because it was about a page and a half. And I figured this would be a shortcut.
We'll see the pictures.
This would be so much easier to comprehend.
This is just showing the main discussions that the public hearing had to do with Article 4, which was the two zoning amendments that were being proposed. We received no comments on the signed amendments that were discussed. And this is just kind of basically showing you the two, the two properties. This is correcting an anomaly on Captain Parker's, and this is the, the biggest conversation, no conversation was discussed about Captain Parker's, but the Great Island Plaza rezoning of the property, I guess shows a little bit clearer here in this. There's, there's three properties here, and then the larger one. This is where the post office is, the Great Island Plaza, Winslow Gray Road, South Sea, Route 28. In the blue here is the B2 zoning district, which is the majority of the three properties, but there are some sections here which are in the residential zoning district. All of the property is in the Village Center Overlay District, VC1. The new owner was interested in developing the area using the B2 zoning district versus the Village Center Overlay District because she really wanted to rehabilitate the existing buildings that are there. She wanted to kind of bring it back to the quaint look that used to be there many, many years ago, that many people at the public hearing recalled. And they, they're showing some pictures of kind of what it would look like. This is what it looks like now, and it's kind of the idea of what they want to bring it back to. This is another section here. Again, this is what it looks like now, and this is their idea of how they would like to rejuvenate it. This is the Thai Basil Place, one of the, I think it's really the only active business that's in there right now. This is how they would bring it, bring it back to life and maybe have some seating out in the front and trying to minimize some of that parking in the front, and also providing buffers and eliminating some curb cuts, if possible, especially the one that's closest to the Winslow Gray Route 28 intersection. And then this is at the very end, this is the old convenience store, kind of taking off that, that less attractive facade and kind of bringing it back to its previous form. So, I don't know if anyone had any questions.
Are they talking about teardowns?
No, I'm talking about rezoning.
I mean, those buildings?
Ending the zoning on the Plaza. Across, right up near the Winslow Gray intersection and the Captain Parker's parcel.
Basically, it will stay the same scale and just replace the, it looks like on the renderings, the facades.
So, that was four?
Four.
Article 4, correct.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 4.
We have a second.
Mostly wanna wait for Tracy's, but...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to recommend 4. All those in favor?
Aye.
You wanna pose 4 to 0 in favor?
I just, one question. The green area is going to be part of this new zoning?
This green area is currently, right now, this, what's showing here is the existing zoning. The entire three parcels that are owned by the same individual are all in the Village Center Overlay, Village Center 1.
Okay.
And then the underlying zoning, and that's an optional zoning overlay, and the underlying zoning varies on the three parcels. Makes it a little bit more difficult to do something under the underlying zoning if you have different zones within the same properties. For example, commercial parking on a residential property requires special permit versus having the parking in the back here on a business is exactly what we want. We'd like to put as much parking in the back and a, and a B2 zoning district as possible. The current developer or the current owner is very interested in redeveloping this in a very thoughtful manner, and we're hoping that this rezoning would help her do that.
So, it's not gonna have, now, I guess what I'm concerned about is, you know, anytime we have zoning changes, where an abut's a residential area, you know, we get parking in the back, first thing that's gonna come up is, the light's gonna shine in my eyes.
And, and that was something that was brought up at the public hearing. There were some concerns. We sent out specific letters to all of the abutters, letting them know about this zoning change, so we did get quite a few of those people coming. But there are, there are provisions in the zoning bylaw to protect residential properties adjacent to commercial with regard to lighting, as well as extended 20-foot screen buffers and that type of thing to help mitigate.
Kathy, what, what happens when multiple parcels are held in common ownership but are in different zoning districts? Don't they all become the same because essentially the lot lines go away, don't they?
No, there, there is the ability to have the boundary move, I think, 30 feet into. The less restrictive zoning district could move into the more restrictive zoning district, so there is the possibility of that in the existing bylaw.
Lesser can go into the more, but not vice versa?
No, I think you could probably have the B2 go a little bit into the residential zoning, zoning districts through our existing bylaw, but it gets very complicated to try and address that.
I would, I would have thought it would have all been absorbed by, I would have thought the more intense, but maybe not. Okay.
Okay. Are they all held in common ownership?
They are right now. No, oh, they're all the same owner, but they're three different parcels on the same deed.
Okay. In Yarmouth, don't we dissolve property lines when adjacent parcels are held in common ownership?
Sometimes for zoning purposes, they might be. And it depends on what she plans on actually doing for the full site redevelopment. We have not received any formal plans on, on the site design at this point.
The Second Amendment is Article five. This article will allow for temporary sign, special events, town-owned land for profit entities in conjunction with amendments to the Board of Selectment, community event sign policy. Basically, this is asking for a third sign in regards to for-profit events. And, um, one of the things that arose, what was the last event there?
It was at, at the Country Fest. Because it was for a for-profit entity, they weren't able to have the 32-foot square foot community event sign like you have over at the Seaside Festival and other places. So this is making an amendment in order to allow that. And it is also adding the provision for the possibility of a third community information board at a location that would ultimately be determined by the Board of Selectment should they so choose.
Make a motion to recommend?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that carries by a vote of four to zero.
So this should be able to be used for the Irish Festival, right?
Yep.
There you go.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Do you want to do any of the other, go through any of the other articles? We already did the school article, I believe. Well, you remember what the vote was on that? I'm sure it was unanimous, but we have all five there for that?
One and two say four to zero.
Huh?
I believe they were four to zero. I believe-
Oh, yeah, I see it down there now. That was four to zero was number one. Two, as Eric pointed out, was four to zero. Three was four to zero. Four, we just did. Five, we just did. Six is free cash. Want to hold off on that one?
Yeah, we recommended it.
Did we recommend that? Where's that? Oh, yeah, four to zero, we did six, okay. Seven?
Seven would not have had anything.
We didn't have an amount of free cash that we were going to, we were going to wait until we saw what happened with the DPW article. Weren't we going to do that?
Right. So are we now inserting 250,000 in there?
Yes.
All right, and we did have a vote, which passed in terms of the funding, which I-
You make a recommendation tonight and we'll have that available for town meeting.
I would assume we would have a vote of three to two in favor on that because that's what Eric's, Eric's math was to put 250,000 from free cash in here. And we had some discussion and some disagreement about that. Then we voted on it and the vote was three to two.
That might have been more for Article number two.
I think that was for Article two.
Right.
Was it two?
Well, it would have been because it was the dollar value to be posted for the-
No, but they kind of go together.
Yeah, they do. But two was the, two was the number minus the 250. This allocates the 250, so I don't think they're the same. We subtracted the 250 after Article two. Now we need to add it back in.
So the number's going to be 250 in here? Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll second it. To put $250,000 in Article seven, which would be reducing Article two by that amount.
Well, the article we're going to state in number, the number we're going to state in Article two is 16, 235, 435, which reflects the reduction of the 250, which we're now adding back into Article seven.
Give me that figure again on two, the number? Okay. That will be the amended number.
Yep.
All right. Now we're putting 250.
475, sorry.
Excuse me, four, seven, five?
Seven, five.
Okay. So now we're putting 250 back in seven, right?
Correct.
All right. So we had a motion and a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so that, I guess, did you vote? I had that one, Norm.
I didn't vote.
You didn't vote. Okay, so we have three on zero, one on that. So that's seven.
I think Tracy will want to have a vote on eight.
Eight, what is eight?
It's the bottle ban.
Bottle ban.
All right, so we're going to wait until, and we're going to wait until the special meeting that we're going to have prior to the town meeting on eight. Nine?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article nine.
That's the diff, okay.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes four to zero on nine.
The only thing I would need to know now is who wants to read what explanations and make them.
Tracy on everything.
There you go. I'll second that.
We're there, five of us and there are nine articles. I'll take the first two.
What do you?
I'll take the first three. That will leave it, uh, no, that doesn't work. I'll, I'll take the first two.
What are the next two? I'll be happy to take them. All right, so I'll do three and four.
Number three and number four.
I'd like to take number nine. The diff.
Yeah, who's, five and, five and six are going to be done by-
Let me give them to Tracy.
The planning board would normally-
Five and six will be the planning board will move those, okay?
Yeah, but she'll still have to, she'll still have to make the recommendation. Yeah, make, the public makes the most. She'll just have to say recommend.
Yeah, right.
That's too easy.
I know, that's right.
What's, what's seven? What's that? I can do seven. And-
Eight, we're going to-
Eight's going to be-
He is the citizen.
So they will do that.
Seven, citizens will do number eight.
And I didn't even think of that when I jumped in.
That's right.
I didn't even think of all these defers when I jumped in.
Does Mark have nine?
Yeah, I'll take nine.
The diff, okay.
No, that does it for me.
All right, so Eric's got one and two, Norm's got three and four, Tracy is going to be involved with the planning board on five and six. I'll do seven. Citizens will do eight.
Wait a second, Article six is the zoning, free cash?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll do six because I'll do six and seven. I only have one. Oh, you have seven.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I'll do number six.
Normally, the chair gets to read the long.
So that would leave just number five for-
Yep. Let's see. So we got that, right? Warren Article Recommendation. So Board and Committee Action. Do you have any appointments, Mark?
Yeah, I do. I have, we got to take care of the Community Economic Development Committee. We have five slots to take care of. I'm recommending that we reappoint Peter Smith, Mary Vilbon, Jack McCormick, and Ryan Castle to three-year, unexpired terms on the Community Economic Development Committee. These are appointments running through July 2021.
Okay, we have a motion to-
So moved.
Okay, motion is second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Vote carries. And also to reappoint Ken Smith to a three-year term on the Economic Development Committee, which runs through July 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries. And then the final item here is to reappoint Sandra Clifford for another three-year term to the Board of Registars. This is a term that will run through November 2022.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We have approval minutes of May 14, 2019, and June 4, 2019. Okay, you're moving both of those, Mark?
Yes, I am.
Anyway, second on both, Norm?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that carries unanimously. Any executive session minutes to approve? We going to hold those?
Yes.
September 10, 2019. Approve and hold?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Upcoming agenda review. We have anything, we're into November now, right?
Yep. We'll have a meeting, right before town meeting at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's, I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah, that's up, been posted for six.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the potential for an executive session, Mike?
Um, yeah, I mean, some issues came up in public comment that certainly I, I mean, I didn't know very much about. I won't say I didn't hear anything, but I didn't know very much about it at all. That's kind of disturbing.
Yeah.
And, and has obviously raised some significant legal questions. If, if we do that, Dan, when would we do it? When would we post that for?
I would post it for probably 5:30 because I don't think we have a lot of business to attend to. We took care of a lot of regular business for town meeting tonight. So I think 5:30 would probably give us a pretty good situation on that.
Okay, I'll leave it to the board. You guys available at 5:30?
I can be, but I'd like to, I'd like to do it sooner, you know?
Sooner than town meeting night?
Yeah, I just wonder if that discussion, if we're going to want to have some time to sit on it and, and think about whether or not it's going to have any bearing on, on how we present or what we say. I, I just think-
Well, okay.
My understanding is Monday night, and I'm not sure if any of this is going to change, but in talking to Tracy earlier today, I believe she had indicated that the plan from the school committee is to have another meeting on Monday night. So if they were looking to entertain this amendment, we would at least know by Tuesday morning what they ended up having.
Yeah, I'd be, you know, I'd be surprised if their attorneys told them or advised them to do that. I mean, they, we have an agreement.
I'm not sure if they got-
We have an agreement and, and the agreement is frankly written in stone. It is. It's, it's a contract. It binds both parties. And it's a contract between the school, the town of Dennis through their Board of Selectmen, Town of Yarmouth through its Board of Selectmen. And then the agreement went to be, um, from there, um, it goes, it goes to town meeting. But the, the parties to the contract are the school committee and, and we're not going to change anything, especially with it being the 11th hour. I mean, there's just not any, even if you wanted to, there wouldn't be time to do anything like that.
But we wouldn't know anything Monday evening.
But what I, what I think is despite what they do, I think we have to live up to our obligations, is what I'm saying, you know? To, to, to best protect our legal position.
And I think it's going to be important for Dan Horgan to know that if they tried to slip something in on town meeting floor, that our attorney, assuming he gives the position that it can't be done, Dan should know that so that he doesn't accidentally allow it.
Council should be prepared for that question.
We, we could have a meeting if you wanted prior to the town meeting and if, um, you know, I'm not so sure town council could get here, but we've had them on the phone before. We could, we could do a meeting one night that, that's convenient to everybody, maybe Monday night or something like that, if you wanted to do that.
I'm comfortable with Monday night.
In the meantime, I could give them a call, talk to them.
I think this, I go back to Eric's point. I think we need sufficient time. I mean, it's such an important issue.
Can we come in for a phone call at 5 o'clock on Monday?
Want to try that?
Yeah.
Can I do that?
Let's do that.
Yeah, all right. So you know what? Voting to, to try to pull that off is exactly something the school committee would do on a Monday night before a Tuesday town meeting.
And we're all scrambling to figure out what it's all about, what happened, who did what. And so, yeah, the dust is sort of flying in the air. I think it may be valuable to send a message that we're going to have an executive session to go over some of that, those shenanigans.
But our attorney will be there and it's our meeting, so no matter what comes up-
What, from Monday night on the meeting?
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah, we'll have attorney, Jay, I don't believe is going to be there, but we will have an attorney there.
Is he going to be there Tuesday?
I don't believe that he's able to.
But he's going to have somebody from his office?
Somebody will be there, yeah.
Okay.
But we're going to have a conference call 5 o'clock Monday night, right?
Yeah, that's the plan.
So that would be good.
So just to recap, I will not be here on the 14th, but I will be here on the 19th.
Eric is out on the 14th. Only, okay, good. All right, on the 14th, we got the National Golf Foundation Presentation, CEVAC, Round Four Agreement CPC Project Update, Town Council Office Hours, Ocean Club License and Possible Vote.
We also probably will have two collective bargaining contract for ratification. We should hopefully have all the signatures from the two parties.
Those will be an open session?
That'll be, it'll be on the consent agenda like they normally are. That would be the fire union and the steelworkers.
Okay.
Let me just go back. What is the announcement of that executive session conference?
It would be a potential, it's interesting, let me work on the word smithing of that, but it would be related to-
Potentially litigation.
Yeah, potential litigation would be probably the overarching guise of that, based on an agreement that we have in breach of an agreement.
If it's a potential breach of a contract, it's potential litigation. Okay, that's fine.
Did, let's call you a little negative.
I have a lot to say about that, but I'm not going to say it in public session this time. So we'll, we'll save that for Monday. Very surprised to hear what I was hearing at the beginning of this meeting, to be honest with you. I think there's some people that should really check in with their counsel. And then the 19th, Waits and Measures, IMA with Barnstable, tentative license renewal hearing for Grand Cafe. That's people where we allowed a license transfer, but, but they haven't done anything. And the ABCC was holding their application and keeps bothering Linda, saying they need to do this, this, and this. So the renewal, the licenses, all the renewal applications have to be in by the end of November. So we're letting them know that we're going to have a hearing on whether or not we're going to renew their license for non-compliance. Then we have the Veterans Beach Sticker Policy, Second Hearing Proposed By Law with Poly Styrene, Presentation of Razwhack Golf Fee, Second Hearing Committee Handbook, Final, and Be Board of Selectment Goals Again. Oh, good. You're not sure you're not missing the 19th, Eric? You wanted to swap?
I suddenly feel like I'm gonna be sick then.
Okay, so anybody else have anything on that? All right, good. So upcoming gen, individual items, anybody have anything?
Nope.
Okay, can, we have a consent agenda?
We do, yes. There is a correspondence relative to the drive-in site and the interim use policy. Back in May, we had the policy for your review. The, there was commentary given to us at the time by the board. The redline version of that is in this draft that Community Development put together. Actually, it looks like it's a blue line. So we incorporated the commentary that was provided that night from the board into this interim use policy. So this time in which the drive-in site is still a little Spartan with its accommodations. This should cover us for future agreements with any people that want to use it.
I'm just looking quickly at it. On page four, under Procedures and Permits, it has some capital X's where some, it's talking about application is available at Town Hall online at, and there's no online.
Oh, we haven't, there's not a web address.
There's not a, an address yet? I guess that'll just be filled in then, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then there's a donation, I see, gift to the senior citizens, $145 gift.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, move, a motion second to, on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And now we come to TA Contract. Dan, you had a, I haven't spoke to town council about this yet, but you had a little brief conversation with town council about the contract.
Yes.
And what's going on, and so why don't you tell everybody about that?
So the question was, because it's been some time since the board has considered some sort of renewal here in this arena, so.
Yeah.
The question was, is this a, like an appointment where the board by charter is a four-fifths appointment? Or is it, is it something different than that, like simple majority? And town council had indicated that this should be treated as a contract renewal because the appointment has been made. And so what would be out there would be to negotiate and agree or come to terms on the next contract cycle. And once that's done, like any other contract, it would be subject to the board's ratification on a majority vote. So that's how it was explained.
Okay, and I think, didn't you tell me he also suggested that there be a subcommittee?
Yeah, so like in the first time out, there was a two-member committee created to negotiate that, and he recommended the same type of situation where the chairman appoints two individuals to negotiate the terms.
Well, I'd be willing to revive the shrewd negotiating team of Stone and Tully to take that over.
I'll second that.
Sure. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so, so when do you want to do this, Dan? I think we should start after town meeting sometime. Eric, what do you have available for November?
You know what, Mike? I am wide open.
Are you?
Absolutely.
What do you, what do you have available for November? Because I know that's a busy month for you, Eric.
I am, I could do, I have the afternoon of, or late afternoon of the 7th. I have all day the 8th. And then assuming we can, we can do one during, you know, that time period, then we could sit on it, and then I'll, then back the week of the 18th to the 22nd. So we could do two in November. One, preferably the 8th, and then one that third week.
So the other week's the 18th of what?
The other week was the 18th to the 22nd.
All right.
Week before Thanksgiving.
What I'll do is, I'll go back to the office and see what my, I'm sure I can accommodate some of those dates. And I'll give you both, I'll contact you both tomorrow with some proposed times. We'll do, the 8th is the best day for you?
8th is the best day.
What day of the week is that?
That's a Friday.
Friday, okay. Dan, you gonna be around that day?
Sure.
Okay. That's a Friday, the 8th. What time are you proposing, Eric?
I'm wide open that day.
Okay, how about you, Dan?
I'm wide open.
Okay. So we'll get a time on the 8th, and then what about the week of the 18th to the 22nd? What's your best day, would you, would you, you like?
Let's shoot for, I'll be over on this side at town 10 o'clock.
On what day?
On Wednesday, sorry, the 20th.
How do you fix on that day?
What time was that, Eric?
10 o'clock.
Yeah, that's fine.
So Wednesday, I just want to check that Wednesday date, 11, I just want to make sure I'm not in court or something. I don't think I am, at 10.
Did we have a time on the 8th?
Uh, Friday, no, we didn't. You have a time?
I mean, I'm wide open, so if you want to check your schedule and.
Okay, let me check the, let me check the schedules, and I'll get a time for it. I'll do that by tomorrow.
I'm on good afternoon time. We've got some employment interviews.
Afternoon?
Yeah, after.
Okay, so you want to do it in the afternoon, okay. Is that okay, Eric, in the afternoon?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we'll nail that down tomorrow. In the meantime, you can get your listed demands written up.
Yeah, they're pretty lengthy.
And we'll get our no list written up.
Just take it easy on me, I'm delicate, you know what I mean?
All right. Okay, so where are we?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have motion to adjourn, we have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? We are adjourned.